Okay, very good. Good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeals hearing for May 18th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law and the Executive Order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. The hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notice page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. A number of people called upon to offer comment, and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon, and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again, and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. I will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing. Okay, and now I want to take a roll call of the board members. Mr. Fortune?
Here, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ogierro?
Here, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Robinson?
Good morning.
Ms. Dong?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kedell?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lo?
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Looks like we are all here. I'm glad to see that. Mr. Fortune, you now begin with the call of the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes from September 29, 2020, October 20, 2020, November 17, 2020, March 3, 2021, and April 6, 2021. We need a motion.
A motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
On the first case for extension, calling BOA 836-636-603, Dorchester Avenue. Mr. Chair, this did expire on, well, didn't expire on August 23, 2020. This would be their first extension if we grant it. Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Ariatir?
Sorry. Good morning. My name is Steve Singer. I'm an attorney from Wakefield, Mass. I'm here on behalf of the owner, petitioner, 603 dot av LLC.
And why are you seeking an extension, Mr. Singer?
Okay, my client's purchased this property in August of 2020. At the time, the previous owner had sought and obtained a zoning relief, which is the extension that we're seeking at the present time. And due to the pandemic, under the Governor's executive order, that permit has been, the running of that permit has been told. In addition, the former owner had sought approvals from the Boston Redevelopment Authority, and that was being done actually after this board had voted to approve the variance. That actually took additional time and wasn't actually done until May of 2020.
Okay, Mr. Singer, Mr. Fortune, did you say that this expired on August 3, 2020?
That's correct. August, yes, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Singer, generally, we are reluctant to grant extensions when they've been expired for as long as this one has. Is there a reason why you didn't come before this board since last August, once your clients had purchased the property?
Well, I can't say that I personally was involved with that at that time. My clients were not aware that the permits had expired and thought that the permits were still in effect. They had bought the property as permitted, and so again, not aware that the permit had expired.
All right, I mean, you know, given the extreme nature of the pandemic, I think we tend to be a little bit more lax on these issues than we have in the past. In the future, I would not recommend coming to this board with something that is an extension request or something that expired that long ago. But in this case, can I have a motion, please?
So I'd like to make a motion for a two-year extension from the date of expiration. So that would give them until August of '22 to get the work done.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you have your extension.
It's through August?
August 3, 2022.
August 23rd, 23rd.
23rd, okay, fine. And I hope at that time, you're not coming back.
No, no, no. We're in the works and pulling permits at the present time.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for your time.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 805-934-3-SNELLINGPLACE. There's companion case, BOA 805-933-3-SNELLINGPLACE. Mr. Chair, these expired last week on 4/27/2021. This would be their second extension if we grant it. Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Farullo?
What's the last name?
Farullo.
Farullo? Can you see that name?
Is anyone on from SNELLINGPLACE, 3-SNELLING?
Shall we move on, Mr. Fortune?
Yeah, I'll come back to those. Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-5808-65-GOVSTREET. This is, this, the board approved this proposal in July of 2020. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. This is actually a request for extension to sign the decision, Mr. Secretary. This is obviously within the two years. This involved a two-family project in East Boston. There was a proviso that actually required the applicant to go back and revisit how his plans were being finalized because of parking. We've been working on that, and we think we have a solution, but we were holding this decision pending a resolution to that issue for the proviso. So we're respectfully requesting that the time to sign the decision be extended so that the board can go ahead and file that.
Okay, so you're planning on coming back to the board with an updated plan?
That is correct, but we, in order to do that, Mr. Chairman, we do need the decision finalized.
Okay, when we made the proviso to hold signature, was there a timeframe set on it?
No, I don't believe that was the case. What we were doing is the board included a proviso regarding the number of required parking spaces. We were requesting relief to only have one parking space in relation with respect to this project. It was almost not workable to have the two spaces, but we have come up with a solution. There has been amendment filed, but in order for us to process the amendment, the decision needs to be finalized.
Okay, so, I mean, the approval was granted in July 2020, which means it was good for two years, right?
That is correct.
So you want the proviso on the signature to extend to that same period of time?
No, under the Enabling Act, the board has 90 days to sign its decision. My experience has been historically, when the delay in the decision, the delay in the signing has occurred, the board has, for good cause, just voted to extend that time.
I understand that. The question is, what period of time would you need? Because you'll have to schedule a hearing before the board.
So there's a decision pending for this approval that is legal in order to be signed? It just, my understanding is it could not be signed because more than 90 days elapsed. So we just need the decision signed. I assume 30 days to get the decision signed would be sufficient?
Okay, very good. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Ogierro?
For a 60-day extension.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the motion is to grant a 60-day extension on the signing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're all set.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-9221-837, Saratoga Street. This is a similar, the board approved this proposal in January 26, 2021. Name and address, for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Mr. Chairman, similar situation. This was actually approved by the board on January 26. We did get the decision drafted. It appeared that it would not make the 90 days, and therefore, we're requesting, we probably need 30 days additional to get the decision signed.
All right, can I have a motion?
Motion for a 60-day extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. On the next 10 cases, calling BOA 834-506-98-MAGNOLIA STREET, CASE BOA 834-511-100-MAGNOLIA STREET, BOA 834-505-729, SALON STREET, CASE BOA 834-501-170-MAGNOLIA STREET, CASE BOA 834-542-162-MAGNOLIA STREET, CASE BOA 834-493-164-MAGNOLIA STREET, CASE BOA 834-563-8WOODFORD STREET, CASE BOA 834-539-23-MAGNOLIA STREET, CASE BOA 834-541-4CHAMBLIT STREET, AND CASE BOA 834-537-7TAPMOON STREET. Mr. Chair, these decisions all expired on 10/19, October 19, 2020. This would be their first extension if we grant it. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Kendra Ro. I am the proponent. My address is 58 Union Street, Brighton.
All right, why do you need an extension on all these cases?
So I'm working with the Department of Neighborhood Development on these affordable housing buildings, and when I was due to get my funding approved of March of last year is when the pandemic hit pretty hard, and my lender at that time had requested an extension to provide the commitment letter. And so throughout the course of last year and last summer, waiting on the letter was not forthcoming from the lender, so I had to switch gears to go to another funding source. So we've been delayed in acquiring funding due to COVID-related matters.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Fortune, you said it was October 19, 2020 that expired?
That's correct. They got their first approvals in 2018, so 2020, they would have expired, but due to the pandemic, obviously.
Okay, so, to the applicant, is there, given that it expired in October of last year, is there a reason you haven't come before the board sooner?
The funding situation was up in the air for a little while, but we are actually closing on six of these properties on Monday.
Okay, well, again, typically, what we like to see is that the expiration date nears, that you come and request an extension, and if there is a reasonable explanation for it, we will grant it. We don't like to do it after the fact, so many months, but again, the pandemic has created a different context, so I will entertain a motion.
A motion for a one-year extension.
I'll second that motion.
And that is, Mr. Ogierro, from the date of expiration?
Can we do one year from today?
You want one year from today?
Yeah, the date of expiration was October, right?
Right.
October, 2020, correct.
Okay, so you want one year from today? And Mr. Fortune, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
Okay, calling the next case for hearings, for deferrals and withdrawals, please. If you can give me the address first?
363 Albany Street.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 113-4769, 363 Albany Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscana with an address of 11th Beacon Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Pint Street Inn today. We did get notice from the mayor's office and some of the elected officials that there were some late opposition that had come in, which we believe we can address at some private meetings with some folks. We would ask today for a deferral. We don't need much time. There was something available in early July that is a good point, so grant that.
Okay, Mr. Drago, this is for a billboard?
It is, Mr. Drago, yes.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion for a deferral.
I'll make it second. Okay, Mr. Fortune, what do we have for a date?
The earliest date we can get is June 29.
Okay, we'll take that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for, there was a motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and we have a date for you, Mr. Drago.
June 29.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals and withdrawals for 9:30? Address, please.
37 North Square.
This is just a building code, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Hold on two seconds. Who's going to call in for the record, case BOA 115-295-437-NORTH-SQUARE? Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, this is Davis Quilty, attorney for the applicant, and we would seek to withdraw the building code matter only, leaving the zoning case to be heard this morning. This is a companion case to one the board heard on April 6, or 33 North Square, which is the immediate next-door space which we're seeking to combine.
Okay, can I have a motion on the building code?
Motion to deny building code.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mr. Quilty, you'll, we'll take up the case for the zoning relief.
Thank you, sir.
Any other deferrals and withdrawals for 9:30 only?
Mr. Fortune, Mr. Fortune, 51 Lolly Street, please.
For the record, calling BOA 117-1375-51-LOLLYSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm here on the behalf of Tim Johnson. Mr. Johnson could not be here today. He asked me to request a deferral on this matter.
And what's the reason for a deferral?
From what I was told by Mr. Johnson, I believe he and his client feel that they probably need to do some more work with the neighborhood.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Marancy?
This is Eric.
Mr. Marancy, can I just check in? Because I believe this case actually has a basement unit and a headhouse as part of the submission. Is that something that you're looking at with your client?
I'm not aware. I just spoke with Mr. Johnson, as I said, couldn't be here, and asked me if I was here, if I could defer the matter. I'm not involved at this point. I don't know whether that will change, but I guess I can, all I can say is unaware, I'm unaware of those facts, Mr. Robinson.
Okay, well, maybe you could relay that information back to Mr. Robinson.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to support.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And Mr. Marancy, please communicate Mr. Robinson's concerns to Mr. Johnson.
Certainly, what is the date, please?
You have a date of July 13 at 12:30.
Thank you very much.
Well, are there any other deferrals and withdrawals for 9:30 only? Mr. Chair, we do have a case, I don't know, 4160 to 4164 Washington Street. They've been asked to defer due to the plans examiner to review their plans.
Is there anyone here to make that case?
Mr. Rojas on? Either way, I want to get to that. I will talk about it.
Yeah, Mr. Fortune, when it comes up, we'll deal with it then, I guess.
Okay, I'm going to go back. So we have no, I'm going to go back to the extensions to give Mr. Farullo some time to get on. Is anybody on from SNELLINGPLACE?
Do I have any raised hands or?
Mr. Fortune, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I just received a message from Mr. Farullo, who's in my office, that he cannot get on. I had sent him a message that the case had been called, asking him to log on, and he just responded that he couldn't for some reason. He's calling the administrator, can't get on.
Okay.
He's asking, could he be put on at the end of the, at the end of the day? Or I just don't know what else to?
Why don't we, why don't we call it again at the end of the 9:30 hearings?
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, calling the first case for 9:30.
Mr. Quilty, will you contribute after Mr. Farullo?
I will right now, yes.
Calling the first case for 9:30, calling BOA 116-0871-297, Maverick Street. This is to renovate existing three-family dwelling, constructed rear addition with rear decks and roof decks, and extend partial living space to the basement. Violation Article 27-T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Article 53, Section 9, the foyer ratio was excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive at 3. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. We may have, I believe, someone from the architect team as well, but I can walk through the presentation briefly. This is a pre-existing three-family dwelling located in the Jeffries Point neighborhood. Our proposal would be for a complete renovation of the entire building, proposing a rear addition and extending partial living space only to the rear portion of the building itself. That lower level will be used in conjunction with Level 1, so it's not intended to be a separate independent unit. As you can see here, this is a very typical triple-decker along Maverick Street, and I believe we do have some rendering showing what the proposed change would be, the exterior. Just as we're scrolling through that, the unit sizes will be relatively generous for this area, ranging from about 1,200 square feet up to about 1,600 square feet total. These are intended to be two-plus bedroom, three-bedroom units, and again, this will involve a complete rehab and rehabilitation of the existing structure. Because this is located at 3F 2000th District, the use, which is already pre-existing, isn't allowed use. For relief, we're requesting a rear yard setback variance, which will allow us to reduce the setback to 20 feet, required as 30 in the district. Our foyer ratio would be increased to a 1.81, where 1.0 is allowed. We are cited for height, Mr. Chairman, but I believe that has to do with the headhouse that was originally included in the plan. Obviously, we will not intend to complete the headhouse, there is no requirement, because this is a three-story building, we would not even require building code relief. So we anticipate a modification to remove that headhouse in conjunction with the use of that roof deck. Last but not least is the side yard, the existing conditions are pretty much going to remain. We are proposing the addition to keep the same plane of the sides of the building as shown here on the plan. I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask you the obvious question. So do the plans currently show a headhouse?
They do, and again, we typically, when these are filed, the architect files these to be, at least intended to be compliant with the building code. And in this particular case, we've informed them that a headhouse is not likely to be supported by the board, and our client has no issue with removing the headhouse.
Okay, and the second question is, has to do with basement living space, is, I think I looked and I had an elevation, what is your understanding of the dimension between the floor of the basement and grade?
There is a section, Mr. Chairman, included, and I believe it shows nine feet from the grade to the ceiling in the portion of the area that's being proposed to be.
Well, it shows nine feet to the ceiling, but I believe it only shows four foot four to the, from the floor of the basement to grade.
Oh, I see, I apologize, I misunderstood the question. Yeah, I believe it's 4.4, but nine-four total.
All right, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson? That 4.4 doesn't seem to me, seems to be a little bit of a concern.
Yeah, you're correct. The plans are good, they do show the basement unit. It is connected to the main floor unit, so it is not a separate unit, so it does have an internal, you know, access there, but it does have a window well indicated.
Okay, and is Jeff Hampton, are you there? I didn't do you in the roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we recommended, I believe, approvals with design review, that the basement space be eliminated and that we do design review.
The basement space be eliminated altogether, or bedroom, living space be eliminated?
I mean, it says eliminated altogether. I know you guys are very particular about the bedroom space. That hasn't filtered down to the planners yet, so. So I'll go with the board. I know how the board is with bedrooms.
Mr. Chair, if I may, on the last three matters, I believe the board in these instances included proviso that it not be bedroom space, but had no issue with it, provided it is current.
Mr. Lynn, that's correct. That's the posture that we have taken pretty consistently.
Yeah, and I wouldn't have a problem with that either, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Robinson, any other comments about the plans?
Nope, they're good.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the proposal?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support for this proposal. During the community process, this proposal received strong support from Gulf Street Cities Association and from Avarice. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of South Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
No raised hands.
Mr. Chair, we have one letter of support.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fortune. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with the proviso that there's no bedroom in the basement and BPA design review.
And that the headhouse be changed to?
Oh, and the headhouse, yeah. And the headhouse be changed to a hatch.
Seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Calling the next, calling the next case, calling BOA 114-5941-212, Chelsea Street. This is a change of occupancy, two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. Renovations in addition of a new fourth story on an existing three-story building. The violation is Article 27-T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the foyer ratio was excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Article 53, Section 56, past street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Mr. Ken Logan. With me is Eric Zacherson, who is the project architect. Real briefly, Mr. Chairman, this is a pre-existing two-family dwelling located in a 3F 2000th District, so the proposal- So the proposed change from a two to a three is an allowed use. We are proposing complete rehabilitation of the existing structure, as well as a vertical addition that would combine the third level with the new fourth level for Unit 3. The existing unit sizes for Units 1 and 2, for first and second level, are just over 575 square feet. Again, that's a pre-existing condition. Those are currently two bedrooms and will continue, will remain as two bedrooms. The Unit 3 size with the addition would be about 1,100 square feet. That's proposed also to be a two-plus bedroom. With respect to the violations that were cited, the lot area for additional dwelling unit being insufficient, 3,000 square feet would be required. This property is a little over 2,100 square feet total because it is a shallow lot. The height of our building would be four stories with the addition at 42.2 feet, which is 7.2 feet above the allowable height limit. We are proposing about 900 or so square feet of open space, which would seem to be conforming, but we were cited for it by ISD. I feel that the look at the site plan would show that there's probably sufficient usable open space for this change. This building was previously a three-family, changed to a two, so this proposal simply would change it back to its prior use. With respect to the parking, because it is illegal to, the proposed change to a three would require one additional parking space under Article 53, and only for the proposed new units. We believe that adding a curb cut at this site would be more detrimental to the parking situation along Chelsea Street, and therefore, we're asking relief for that. And last but not least is the iPod applicability. Happy to answer any questions?
Okay, so the parking, you're simply, there's no additional parking?
Proposing no parking, correct.
Okay.
There is only one.
Okay, now let me ask you a question about the height. In terms of context, you are going up another story. Can you, can we go back to the site context photographs that were there? How does, what, Mr. Lins, what does that do in terms of the neighborhood context? Will you be higher than the neighboring buildings?
There is, this, this section of Chelsea Street, Mr. Chairman, does have a mix of three-story and four-story buildings. As you get up a little bit further up Chelsea on the other side, there are actually a number of?
Mr. Lins, in this picture, it looks like all three-story buildings.
Correct, I'm saying if you go up the street the other direction, there are actually fours and some five-story buildings as well.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
The plans are good.
Okay, and can you, do you have a sense of context in terms of height?
I mean, I, I feel like, I had a question for BPA on this. I mean, I assume they reviewed it. I, in a first glance, I generally agree there. It does seem to be the entire street at three stories, with some of them walk up, some of them not, so they kind of vary a little bit. But I assume urban planning has reviewed this and is comfortable with the additional height.
They have, Mr. Robinson, and actually, our recommendation was approval with design review on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proposal?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support for this proposal. During the community process, this proposal received support from Maverick Central Neighborhood Association and from Abotters, and we also received tuterous support. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of South Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak?
Mr. Chair, we have two letters of support.
Okay, anyone here to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chair, we have no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion then?
Approved.
I'll make a motion to support with BPA designer review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Calling the next case, calling BOA 115-295-137 North Square. This is a change of occupancy from retail store to one family to restaurant in one family. Expanding existing restaurant at 33 North Square into 37 North Square for extra seating and install a fire separation door activated by a fire alarm system. The violation is Article 54, Section 12, restaurant use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Secretary Dennis Quilty, attorney at McDermott Quilty &amp; More, representing the restaurant operator and the landlord in this matter. As I suggested earlier, we have withdrawn the building code portion of this, and would like to go forward on the zoning. This is a companion case, the one the board heard on April 6th, and unfortunately, due to a scheduling mix-up, 33 and 37 got separated somewhere along the line. So we were only able to hear 33 on April 6th. We should have had 33 and 37 together. That was corrected, we're back before you today on the 37 portion of this. And as the secretary suggested, it's an expansion of a grand total of 275 square feet of space in 37 to connect eventually to 33 for expanded restaurant purposes. We have gone through a full community review with the two neighborhood groups, Nura and Nunick. It was at a Butters meeting, we've had no objections heard of. And as the board suggested on the April 6th hearing, we will take the building code matters to the state for their further review. So we're here today hoping that the conditional use of the restaurant expansion will be allowed. The restaurant operator, Mr. Vrata, is with us this morning. The restaurant is Forcella, which is a extremely popular, well-run restaurant, which has been in this site for the last couple of years. Prior to that, it housed a restaurant known as Carmen. So this site has been a restaurant operation for probably 25 years. And interestingly, this, the 275 feet has been vacant for about 20 years. So hopefully, this will bring back a viable use to that, that space. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I realize that you're not asking building code relief, so what, what you've chosen to do, it's not that, that the proposal is changed, it's that you're, as with the companion case earlier, you intend to take it to the state board, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir, correct. We were actually advised to do so at our April 6th meeting, and we?
Yes.
We're perfectly happy to do that, want to connect both of them together at the same time.
Okay, but the proposal is unchanged?
Correct, yeah, correct. The actual proposal is the use of the 275 square feet at 37. Yes, correct.
Okay, so I mean, we're not hearing that anyway, but I'm just curious. All right, and then on another non-zoning issue, how is, how is the restaurant done in terms of surviving the pandemic?
Mr. Vrata is a very hard-working person, and the restaurant is spectacular, you should try it. But he's got a very nice outdoor area, and the city, of course, has been very generous in terms of utilizing portions of North Square. So as we get into the warmer weather months, he'll be, he'll be able to stay afloat. But it's obviously the bulk of the year that's not pleasant enough to be outside, that this extra space will help him quite a bit.
Okay, very good. How are the, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine.
I mean, it seems pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proposal?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is John Romano in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to go on record in support, as they've received a lot of support from the community, both from the community organizations and Abotters. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of South Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, and there's no, do you have any letters for opposition, Mr. Fortune?
No, Mr. Chair, I will, what I will do, as I said at the matter of chair in the past, if I have anything, I'll definitely weigh in.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion then?
Approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, good luck, and maybe we'll?
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 116-2927-296 to 302 Cambridge Street. This is a change of occupancy from the spinning studio to restaurant, renovation of the existing 3,361 square ground floor space. There will be no internal or external structural changes, but we'll propose the facade change. The violation is Article 8, Section 7, restaurant use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
I don't see any raised hands here for the applicant. I'm not sure if they're on.
This is Sweetgreen, anybody from Sweetgreen?
Yes, Pam Haber, Director of Real Estate. And I believe our train should be on, Tom, are you on?
Can you, can you start walking us through the proposal?
Tom, can you speak? Tom and?
The Tom Clemens?
No, Tom Miller, I see him, he's there, but?
Oh, okay. Hi, Tom's unmuted. Tom, can you hear us?
He can hear you, but he has no.
Now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened there. I apologize.
Okay, can you tell us, tell us about the proposal, please?
Yep, I apologize. Tom Miller, McDermott Quilty &amp; Miller, I am joined by Stephen Miller as well. You heard from Pamela Haber from Sweetgreen. And so, we're here before you today because Sweetgreen is planning on opening a restaurant on Cambridge Street in Beacon Hill. It is an L265 zoning sub-district, which means the restaurant requires a conditional use permit. We propose to occupy a former spin studio, but will provide healthy seasonal high-quality food to the surrounding Beacon Hill community from its scratch kitchen using fresh and local ingredients. This is located in the commercial section of Cambridge Street. It will provide those healthy options for residents, visitors, and employees of the area in a way that is not currently available. The project has been designed to limit the impact of any odors emanating from the kitchen by venting to the roof, scheduling deliveries and trash pickup so as not to interfere with the traffic on Cambridge Street. Trash is planned on being stored internally until time of pickup, and then will be, the bins will be returned immediately after inside. The space itself has been designed in a thoughtful way to reflect the surrounding community, the environment, based on their experience operating in locations throughout Boston and nationally. During the community outreach process, we've listened to concerns of the Butters and made reasonable efforts to address them. One of the main concerns has been the use of the door on Strong Place as an exit. It's been there since the building was designed. We are, we have included in our design adding temporary planters to direct patrons entering and exiting through that door directly to and from Cambridge Street. Additionally, Sweetgreen is looking forward to working with the neighbors to address other concerns regarding parking and access to Strong Place, immediately abutting the restaurant. The addition of Sweetgreens to this location on Cambridge Street will not adversely affect the Beacon Hill community. It will not cause a serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, will not create, and will not create a nuisance. Sweetgreen is looking forward to joining the Beacon Hill community and being part of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. So will there be takeout at Sweetgreens?
Yes, takeout is part of, part of their restaurant model, but it is less than, I believe it's less than half of their, their orders pre-pandemic.
Okay, but, and I know that, I mean, Sweetgreens has been around, so I know they're familiar with all the various takeout procedures in the city of Boston.
They are.
Okay. Can we, can you bring the rendering up of, for the facade?
I'm sorry, this is Pam Haber from Sweetgreen, and I just put in the chat. Two people from my team who can speak to other questions that you may have are on, but are unable to be unmuted, so if you could please unmute them and?
Okay, what will the hours of operation be?
The hour, the proposed hours are 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Drawings are good.
Yeah, I mean, this seems relatively straightforward. I see we're going from a spinning studio where you lose weight to a restaurant where you might gain weight, but given? Given that it's food, I don't think that's a problem.
Not with, not with Sweetgreens' model, unless you're eating their, you know, large portions.
All right. Any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the proposal?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Joe Koppich over the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we have one letter of support.
Excuse me, I was, I thought Councilor Bach was going to speak. This is Karen Foley, Councilor of South Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Is there anyone here from Councilor's office?
Yeah, Kennedy Avery with Councilor Bach's office. Given that Sweetgreen hasn't agreed to a good neighbor agreement with their neighbors to keep its door on the Strong Place side of residential street as emergency exit only, at this time, Councilor Bach would like to go on record in opposition.
Was there, was there an agreement that was offered that they did not sign? Is that, I couldn't quite hear what you said.
So? Yes.
That's a question from the Councilor's office.
Yes, to our knowledge, the Beacon Hill Civic Association presented a good neighbor agreement to which Sweetgreen and BHCA were not able to come to resolution at this point on a, on a particular matter concerning a side entrance, to which the neighborhood would like to see that used as emergency exit only.
Okay, is there any, any other testimony in, either in favor or opposition?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Brett Mitchell, resident at By Strong Place. Is Tom Clemens on call?
What's the name of Tom, what?
Clemens.
Clemens, yes, he is. Is he part of your development team?
He had sent an email to the residents of Strong Place letting us know that he would draw on support of the proposal, and that's related to the same?
Let me just unmute him. Hi, Tom, can you hear us? Can you state your name and address for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Hi, Tom Clemens, 7 Goodwin Place, Beacon Hill. I'm the co-chair of the zoning committee of the Beacon Hill Civic Association.
Okay.
We had, had extensive discussions with the applicant. For the most part, the applicant has been very cooperative, and on some of the matters that are sort of undefined, such as trash pickup hours and things of that sort, has agreed to make every effort to be cooperative without being specific at this point. But the big issue is the side door on the Strong Place. Strong Place is a small residential lane next to the building. This door, in the past, has never been used as a regular entrance or exit, only for emergency use. The pedestrian passage into Strong Place passes along that side of the building. It's recently been blocked by a car which was parked there for some reason, but that forces residents to walk into the traveled part of Strong Place. Also, this street, this part of Cambridge Street is highly impacted by traffic because there are turning lanes for the hospital, and if the traffic is backed up in Cambridge Street at all, it backs up into the intersection, prevents ambulances from getting into the hospital. So the fact that this is a high takeout use with app-driven pickup by DoorDash-type delivery services and other people who can stop in makes it a very sensitive use in this location. So the problem of potential double parking in front and cars pulling into or parking in front of Strong Place when residents are trying to enter or exit poses a hazard both to pedestrians on the sidewalk trying to pass.
Mr. Clemens, Mr. Clemens, thank you. I think we, you've got, we got your point, or two points. One is the issue of the door on Strong Place, and the other is the question of parking and double parking for pickup. Mr. Robinson, can you tell from the drawings whether that, that door on Strong Place is required as a second? required as a second means of egress? Is that why it's there? And is there an alternative?
Well, I guess I have one other question. I'm not sure I shall rely on the architect of record for that, but it it looks like it might be needed for egress, but there's also a pickup window shown on the side that's even further up Strong Place. Is that in opposition for the?
That has since been removed. Tom, I believe you you presented the wrong. I don't know how, what this is the wrong.
That is no longer part of the proposal. Yep. So the so the pickup window on Strong Place has been removed. It's shown on the drawings, but okay.
That is correct.
Yep, and that door that we've been talking about is is four feet from Cambridge Street. It is just just at the corner of the building, just so that the board is aware that it's not, you know, it's not a great distance up Cambridge Street. We're, you know, we've been talking with the community, talking with Tom Clemens in Beacon Hill. You know, we we are more than willing to work with the residents of Strong Place to alleviate any concerns they have and prevent parking at the base of Strong Place to the extent that we can, supporting PIC process to erect something that would be feasible for them and allay those concerns. And we're also working with the landlord to prevent parking of cars in that space that Tom Clemens referenced.
That door was there when it was a spinning studio, correct?
It is, yes. It's been there. I believe it was built with the building.
Okay, and and was it used? Do you have any way of knowing how how much it was used during the tenure of the spinning studio?
I don't know what they're using it was.
This is Brett Mitchell, Five Strong Place. That door has been not used at all as a result of the spinning studios operations. It was mutated to us to be used only as an emergency.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, any other, any questions in the board? All right, can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with the proviso that the side entrance on Strong Place only be used for emergency use.
Can we also have language regarding takeout, the usual takeout language?
The usual takeout language and BPD A designer for the facade improvement.
And for this applicant only?
This applicant only.
Okay. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Harvey? Oh, okay, sorry. All right, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling an X case, calling BOA one zero zero nine four one six, twenty five Dorchester Street. This is adding a twenty foot by twenty five foot private roof deck for the sole use of unit three only. The violation is Article sixty eight, section twenty nine, root structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Patrick Alveda, and I'm the owner occupant of twenty five Dorchester Street, number three, proposing a private roof deck solely for my unit. This is my second time here at the Board of Appeals. You can scroll up to the slide above as well. So this is my second time here at the Board of Appeals. I came in February two thousand nineteen. There's an issue with the zoning for two family tavern, which has since been fixed, and I am now obviously living in the three family. There have been some of those concerns in the past with unit two and the building as a whole, and I've taken some measures to alleviate these concerns. The owner of the unit two, my building has updated his lease agreement to specifically state that his tenants do not or will not have access to my private roof deck and that they have to comply with all the city noise ordinances. Also, there are more than forty three abutters in the immediate area that have signed off.
Okay, we'll get we'll get to the level of community support. Just describe the project, please.
Okay, yep. So if you scroll down to the the photos, I just want to continue this back staircase and up on the back and build the roof, roof deck on the top, and that the plans are below.
Okay, so just I'm a little confused by the initial presentation. You own the the building as a whole, or you own unit three?
No, I only own unit three, and there just have been some abutter concerns in the past about unit two.
Okay, okay, I just so you own unit three. The other units are tenants from absentee landlords?
Correct, and I also occupy unit number three. I'm an owner occupant.
Right, and but you refer to the other. So it's not a condo in the sense that all three, all three of the people occupy, all three occupants are owners?
Correct. The the unit two is there are tenants there in unit one, which does not have an outdoor space, also has tenants. I am an owner occupant on the third floor.
Okay, all right, very good. And so the access to this proposed roof deck is through a continuation of a staircase, exterior staircase. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And how big is the roof deck?
That's twenty by twenty five feet, and originally I wanted to build bigger, but speaking with the architect and the city, I had shrunk it down to be within the, obviously within the city limits.
Based on the drawing in front of us, I'm not sure how much bigger you could have built it.
Yeah, I think on the top part, I could have gone at least from five feet from the front of Dorchester Street. So I think it was about an extra hundred fifty, hundred square feet smaller than.
Okay, what are those? What are those two rectangles in the top left of the?
Those are air conditioning units.
So you couldn't have. So you couldn't have gone much further?
Right, they could have been moved to the right as well, or in front. Right now, they're sitting in the middle of the deck, and they will need to be moved to.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
The drawings are fine.
Okay. All right, is there anyone, any questions in the board? Anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
If I could just make one comment.
No, 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 we're taking public testimony now. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Like to go record in opposition of this proposal, and I would like to state that the Boston Police Department also wrote a letter in opposition. Thank you.
And can you explain the basis of the opposition, please?
Just, I don't want to say it's a problem property, but just based on the amount of calls that BPD has made and all the complaints in my office has had at this building, we'd like to go and record in opposition.
Okay, but again, I'm just trying to understand because this roof deck is not yet built, so the opposition is based on problems.
On the behavior of the people who live there the past three years. There's like a nine one one call to this property address every weekend.
In all three units?
I don't know, but I can check with BPD and see which ones they are.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The council would like to go on record in opposition to this roof deck based on feedback from neighbors and abutters. Please know neighbors have written to Councilor Flynn about having to call nine one one many times due to loud noise from huge parties at all hours at this address. Many have many have written emails and expressed that the last thing they would like to see is a roof deck at this address, which has become a problem property to the for the neighbors. Councilor Flynn would like to oppose based on the negative impacts that will have on loud noise for neighbors, which will only escalate the current quality of life issues they are they are experiencing. Thank you.
Anna, let me ask you the same question I asked the mayor's office. We have one owner occupant and two tenants in the building. Has have the problems been in with all three units or one or two or three of them, do you know?
Well, when people reach out to us, they reach out to us on twenty five Dorchester Street. And when they reach out to us, it was when the roof deck was proposed, so I will assume it's from this unit, but I'm not certain.
Okay, thank you. Any any other testimony?
Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Bye, Thomas.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, Karen. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Solomon, President, Councilor at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Council Flynn's office, as well as Article sixty eight considerations that Council like to go on record in opposition.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of South Beach George's office. Would like to echo also Councilor Flynn's in go on record in support. Excuse me, opposition. I'm sorry. We oppose. Thank you.
We got it.
Mr. Chair, I do have two raised hands.
Mr. Chair, before we get testimony, I just want to put on the record, Secretary, we do have letters of support, and we also have letters of opposition. The opposition is basically the deck.
Okay. All right, and we have two hands. Pierce Martin, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, hi, my name is Pierce Martin. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Senator Nick Collins. We have also received similar complaints.
What's your address? For the record, please?
Five Douglas Street, Boston, Mass. zero two one two seven.
Go ahead.
So our office has also received a number of similar complaints as the as the ones you referred previously by email and call, both about the possibility, potential of a roof deck being added and as well as the the number of nine one one calls and complaints about noise parties and that kind of thing.
Okay, if someone wants to testify, please have some new information. I think we've gotten that picture pretty clearly.
Okay, Patricia Webb, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Patricia Webb, forty five West Second Street, directly across from this, you know, this unit that's looking for the roof deck. My window would exactly face the roof deck, and there's been numerous calls on this this address and this property, and it's just a problem property as far as as far as the neighborhood is concerned. I mean, if it's not, if it's not a party, you know, there's, you know, remnants of a party that are all over the area and all over the sidewalk. I just, I can't see the point of having a hundred fifteen square home or unit or condo already having two hundred forty four square feet of outdoor living and adding another five hundred square feet of space. I mean, that.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Is it possible that I could speak in regards to the forty three abutters?
No, 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 no. I we've heard, we've heard, you presented, we heard the testimony. I'm looking for a motion from the board.
Can I make a motion for denial?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are the motion carries?
Calling the next case, calling BOA one one six four 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 eight, seventeen seventy eight Columbia Road. This is a wrecked new three, three family dwelling with roof deck and parking garage. The violation is Article twenty nine, section four. This is G Part applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Maransy. I'm attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Kyle and David Gamble. First, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification for the record. Article twenty nine isn't, of course, a violation. It's a compliance requirement under the code. This is a fully zoning compliant application requiring green belt protection overlay district approval approval only for new three story, three family dwelling on an existing vacant lot at seventeen seventy eight Columbia Road in South Boston. The relevant zoning sub district is MFR Multi Family Residential under Article sixty eight. The three units are three bedroom units of approximately twenty four hundred square feet each. Four off street parking spaces are required, and five spaces are provided in a below grade garage accessed by East Eighth Street at the rear of the property by means of what will be a new standard width curb cut. There will be a roof deck for the top floor unit accessed by means of a hatch. Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, this is a zoning compliant application requiring G Part approval only by the board, and I do wish to note officially for the record and to respectfully remind the board that the courts have consistently held, beginning with the appeals court decision in KCI Management versus Board of Appeal of Boston, the G Part approval by the board pursuant to Article twenty nine warrants no more than the imposition of reasonable conditions in connection with approval of a site plan, typically by means of BPDA design review, and that the board does not have discretionary legal authority to deny a G Part permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maransy, for the legal opinion. The so there is so there are no violations outside of the G Part applicability. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, outside of G Part applicability, which, again, I hate to repeat myself, but just to stay for the record, is not a violation. Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you. How are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
The drawings are good.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Like to go record in opposition of this project just based on the community feedback and all the letters of opposition my office has received. Thank you.
Can you be a little more specific?
Yeah, just the building doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood, and we received over a hundred letters of opposition for this project.
So is that a question of design review or a fundamental problem with the proposed?
I would say both, mainly the design review.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, the secretary, we have a hundred and thirty signatures opposed to the project.
And and what's the what's the reasoning, Mr. Fortune?
I can read one, two seconds here. The green belt overlay district, three general requirements. Assets in the housing character and surrounding neighborhood in the streets.
Okay. Anybody else looking to testify?
Anna Calderon is. Anna, you've been elevated to a panelist. She might be having some connectivity issues. Anna, can you hear us? She might be having some issue.
Okay, in the interim, Mr. Hampton, does the BPDA have an opinion on this project?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually never received a rejection letter from ISD on this project, so we had no idea what the zoning violations were going to be. So we were not able to make a recommendation on this, this particular case. I understand that there is some concern with the design with the design of the property and that if this was something to go forward, I would think extensive design review to try to keep in character with that block of Columbia Road. I know there are some triple deckers, very nice triple deckers along that that stretch of Columbia Road that I think we'd try to like to mimic if this were to go forward.
Mr. Chair, I do have another hand raised by Luanne. Luanne, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, it's Luanne O'Connor. I'm the chairwoman of the City Point Neighborhood Association. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Members of the board, the opposition to this is in fact a hundred and thirty signatures, and it is based on roof decks. It is based on the overall design of the building. Columbia Road is made up of beautiful triple deckers, and some of them date back to the eighteen nineteen hundreds. Roof structures, I mean, it's just a beautiful area, and this particular building does not belong in that area. So what we're asking for is denial so that the proponent can take a year, come come back to us in the community with another set of plans and so that we can work together. We're not against building on this lot because everybody has the right to do so. What we are against is taking our area out of character. It is along the beach lines, the yacht clubs, and Georgian homes. It's just a very beautiful architectural area, and we want to keep it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Robinson is.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I was waiting for Anna to come on. I see that she just said she can't mute herself, but this is Karen from Council of South Beach George's office, and we want to go and record in opposition to this project. It's just, it's the people in South Boston, including myself, that's just a beautiful area, and it, you know, it just, who knows what's going to happen if it's all gonna, you know, they're all gonna follow suit, but it's it's just doesn't fit in, and the people are very opposed to it. Thank you very much.
Okay, is that Anna Calderon able to get on?
Mr. Chairman, this is Paul Solomon from Councilor Flaherty's office, echoing all the sentiments that have already been said, and due to the the opposition that we've received to our office and with the design of this project, the council do not record in opposition.
Okay, again, just asking whether Anna is able to get on or unmute herself. Okay.
Mr. Chair, let me just try her. Anna, can you? Yeah, I think she's having some connectivity issues. I can't unmute her either, so I apologize.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, is your sense of the outlier design quality, is that, does that make sense to you?
Probably not. I guess I'm probably in opposite in opposite opinion of all the negative, you know. Aesthetics are subjective, and things are built as of their time, and, you know, I am not one that is mimics historic things. We don't build like that anymore. I am not one that mimics historic things. We don't build like that anymore. But, and the fact that the project is as of right, besides the overlay district, you know, I feel like that we need to rely on the proponent and the BPDA to resolve the design adequately for this site.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Counselor Flynn's right here. I just went over to his office.
Okay. Welcome, Counselor Flynn.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's good to be with you.
Okay, you want to weigh in on 1778 Columbia Road, please?
I'm sorry, I just, I was just able to unmute myself. I'm happy to, I'm so sorry about that. I was having connectivity issues.
I will let Counselor Flynn and Anna decide who wants to speak on behalf of your office.
Anna, I'll stay on. You can speak, okay?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The council would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. We have received significant opposition from neighbors and the City Point Neighborhood Association. The neighbors have noted that as this project is G-Part applicable, it therefore needs to protect the green belt and respect the architecture integrity of the surrounding neighborhood. Many have highlighted their concerns regarding the design. That this proposal does not align with the character of the community on the South Boston beach line. Moreover, at the Butters meeting and in the subsequent weeks that have followed, the proponent did not show a willingness or interest to work with the community on a good-faced compromise. As a result, this project has garnered more than 130 signatures in opposition, and I'm opposing this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anna. Anyone else? Any other raised hands, Madam Ambassador?
Mr. Chair, there are no additional raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, then can I have a more, based on what we've heard, can I have a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to support with BPAD design review and urge the proponent to work with the community on finding a satisfactory design.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, hearing on the motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Mr. J, I might suggest, given Mr. Maransy's legal lecture about applicability, we might want to make that to deny without prejudice, allowing the proponent opportunity to come back.
Deny without prejudice.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Mr. Robinson is in opposition.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 116146814 NS Road. This is building, unattached two-family on the same lot as another attached two-family. Combined lots 12 and 14 NS, a total of six parking spaces. The intent is to create two zoning buildings on Block 1 by 14 NS, violating Article 55, Section 9. The minimum lot width requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Secretary Attorney Joe Henley McDermott, Qualti Miller, 28 State Street in Boston, and good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Also with me is the owner, developer, Adam Sarbaugh. So...
Walk us through the proposal, Mr. Henley.
Yes, sir, and nice to see you this morning. So...
And I appreciate that the applicant has called in as the menace, by the way.
In your neighborhood or close to it. So 14 NS Road is in the Eggleston Square section of Jamaica Plain. What is being proposed, which you'll see here, is to construct a new two-family structure in a zoning compliant manner that complies with the underlying use at this section in the neighborhood, which is a 2F 4,000 zone, compliant with height, all of these setbacks, FAR, and parking. But we are here because we need relief with respect to the lot width. And if you go back, Madam Ambassador, to the site plan, you will see that this is an asymmetrical shaped lot on the survey. It is not a square. It is rectangular. And so the relief is even more narrowly defined in the sense that the code requires a 40-foot lot width. We have that at the front of the site, and we're only two feet, seven inches short at the rear. And the building next to us, the two-family that has been permitted next to us, also meets or exceeds that. So it's both de minimis, but it's also supported by the confines and unique aspects of the property site. So for the proposal, if I can...
Excuse me, Mr. Henley, can we scroll down to the site plan, Collette?
Yeah, so you can see...
So we saw there's an existing curb cut that would get eliminated and a new one in its place?
No, so the curb cut becomes the existing, becomes a new driveway that will serve. To the left is 12 NS, which is not before you, has been granted a permit as of right for a new two-family to be constructed.
Okay, that's, okay, I was confused.
Yeah, to the right is 14 NS, and that's where there's an existing structure that's being demolished. We got a determination from landmarks already. And we would build a mimicked, essentially, a new two-family of the same style and design and programming as the one next to it, which you see in the plans. Their variance pertains only to the lot width, which is, again, required to be 40 for both, and we're only dealing with 14.
Okay, and the driveway is completely within the lot of 14, proposed driveway?
So these are two structures on one lot, which is allowed under Section 55.41. Subsection 12 allows two...
It's a shared driveway.
Correct, sir. Yep.
Okay. Collette, can you scroll down so we can see the rest of the drawings? Okay, that makes it clear, that one. All right, keep going. All right, Mr. Henley, I'm sorry, is there anything else?
Just to take you inside of the proposed two-family, they are identical-sized, two-bedroom units of good size, 1,138 square feet each, each with parking. This is contemplated to be a condominium homeownership project, very consistent with what we've heard from this board with respect to ample-sized housing units for family occupancy, which we think would be a natural.
Okay, Collette, keep scrolling down. Can we see the elevations and renderings if there are any? Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, is that, all right, very, so really, the only zoning issue is the lot width that we have?
Correct, and at the rear of the site only.
Right, right.
Due to its shape.
Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
The plans are good. Just one question on the curb cut width. It's indicated as 12 feet, I think. I assume we can go to a 10-foot for that, or is that 12 needed because it's shared? Minimize the paving between the houses.
Yeah, because of the shared condition. That's the 12-foot. Of course, we have, you know, yeah.
Not a big deal. I just wondered about it. And then I noticed there are two window wells shown, but there does not call out any living space necessarily in the basement. Is that, I mean...
So there's habitable space in the basement. Those are egress, fully compliant, you know, window wells. And if you look on the plans, it's essentially like rec space, you know, intended to be, you know...
Collette, can you show us the floor plan for the basement, please? Okay.
There's no bedrooms or anything called out. I just wanted for clarification.
Yes, thank you.
No other questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is there anyone to testify on behalf of the proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On a Butters meeting, office proposal was held on March 15, 2021, and the applicant has received the support of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council and the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association. So the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This is Peter Favrito from Counselor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor's Abbey, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Counselor, Michael Flary, council would go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, I do have a raised hand by Luanne. Let me just, Luanne, would you like to speak for this project as well?
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we have three letters of support.
Hi, Luanne, are you looking to speak to this project as well?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. I just forgot to put my hand down.
Mr. Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to support with BPAD design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the eyes have it. Mark for carries.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 1175112843 Columbia Road. This is a legalized 216 gross square feet of existing finished basement as livable space. No work to be done. Violation Article 65, Section 9. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Scott Kirkwood, 1904 Washington Street, representing the owners, 843 Columbia Road LLC. You know, this one's pretty simple. I think the best place to look is really the side elevations. That'll kind of show you how this space is being egressed out of, which I think is the most important thing. If you were to include the bathroom downstairs, you know, as part of this 216 gross square feet of livable space, which obviously doesn't need to be because it has mechanical venting, that would require eight and a half square feet of natural ventilation per the square footage, and we have 10 and a half feet here. When you egress out that window, it's only a foot down, and the window's dimensions are 31 inches by 51 inches, and finished sill height above the finished floor is 40 inches. So the window opens completely out. It's not actually below grade. The site grades down in the back, so it's not, it's not really a basement the way it lives. There's plenty of light that gets in there. I actually included as part of my appeal photos of what the finished condition looks like. I mean, there's plenty of light that gets in there, eight-foot finished ceiling height. At one point, it drops down to about 73, but that's still within the residential code. So, yeah, I mean, it's a pretty simple ask here.
So this is, there's no work involved. You're asking to legalize an existing condition, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How is it being used now?
It's not being used. Just management storage for us right now until it gets legalized.
And what would the plan be to use it, assuming it does get legalized?
You know, I mean, it's shown as a bedroom, so we'd probably use it as a bedroom.
So there's a stairwell connecting to the first floor?
Yes, sir. It's a duplex unit.
Yeah, okay. So, and right now, what is the first floor being used as?
The first floor is just built living and dining, and it's an office and a bedroom. The building is also fully protected, sprinkled a lot.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out, so when you legally, typically when you legalize something, it's because there's an existing use that simply has not been made legal. So are there tenants on the first floor?
There are three tenants in the building right now, in the unit, rather, right now. So there are three people living there, and we're not occupying the space. We put a lock on the door per the urgent of the inspector, and we just went through to legalize it, and so that's it.
Okay, okay. So, Mr. Robinson, the usual set of questions pertain, it does look like the topography of the site is sloped, and if the bedroom is in the rear, it seems like it's almost a walkout. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I live right over by here, so I swung by the other day to just take a look, and I think there's, it's not one of our typical issues, so I think it's generally okay.
Okay. Any questions on the board? Is there anyone to testify on behalf of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Patrick Fandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. The applicant notified all Butters of this request. No concerns are raised. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Counselor, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor's Abbey, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone to speak in opposition? Any raised hands?
Mr. Chair, there are no raised hands.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those motion carries?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 11632734160 to 4164 Washington Street. Is Washington Street on? Mr. Chair, this is one I talked about earlier. They're opposed to defer.
Juan is on, Juan Rojas?
Yes, and Mr. Chair, Kyle Smith for the proponent is also on the call.
Are you deferring, sir?
What is the reason for their request to defer?
We're looking for the applicant to make that request.
We weren't seeking to defer, sir. Is there a reason why we are being requested to?
So the plans examiner needs to review the revised plans.
There have not been revised plans submitted, sir.
So I am confused. So what, are you asking to go forward with the hearing? Because we got a notice saying that the applicant intended to ask for a deferral.
No, sir. We have submitted one set of plans to ISD. If there is confusion there, we can certainly defer to eliminate it, but we have submitted one set of plans, and that is what we believe is being presented before you today, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is Eric. I have not received plans to review.
Okay, well, that makes it difficult to go forward. In any case...
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Second.
I'll second that, sir. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, may I please, to the applicant, make sure that you get, when we have it come up in a date, that the architect has an opportunity to review the plans.
Who should we submit them to? May I have Eric's personal information for forwarding, please?
Send it to ISD.
You're going to have a date of July 13 at 12:30.
Okay, let's keep going.
Calling the last case for 9:30, calling BOA 941670257 to 259 Cambridge Street. This is a change of argument to include a cannabis establishment. This is Article 51, Section 16, cannabis establishment use is conditional, and Article 51, Section 53, screening and buffering. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is Mike Ross with business address of One International Place at Prince L. Bell. I'm joined here with the principal of Union Twist Inc., Marie St. Flor, as well as our security consultant, Dan Linsky. This is the Foreign Body Auto Building over at the corner of Lincoln and Cambridge Street in Austin. It's in an NS1 neighborhood shopping sub-district, which is allowed by conditional use permit for cannabis establishment for the use. It's a 9,000-square-foot building. We're not proposing any additions to it. What we're going to do is take 3,000 of the building to use for the retail area, and that remaining approximately 6,000 is going to be indoor parking and indoor delivery. You'll be able to enter the building with the vehicle along the same bay that is there today, in the same curb cut that's there today, because its previous use was actually, you know, automobile. because its previous use was actually, you know, automobile. And there'll be room for 11 spaces within the building, and then when you exit, you're going to exit out of the existing bay off the rear of the building, and that will then allow you to exit onto Empire Street, which is a one-way street that points away from the existing neighborhood. So it really works from a vehicular point of view, and I point that out because it didn't start this way, and there was a robust community process, and the project really has been made a lot better. Recently, we were trying to get in through the back, and it was very complicated. So it's a much smaller retail area. The, there's one entrance for the customers, and then there's a separate entrance for security, you know, through the same main lobby entrance. The hours of operations that are proposed here are from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. There's additional landscaping and bicycle area for people and pedestrians to encourage non-vehicular access to the building. And the, the other plan, and there's some elevations that you can look through here. The other plan is to just maintain the existing signage on the building, obviously subject to BPDAD design review to change those signs accordingly to, to use the signage of the Union Twist. Some of the elevations will show that we've reduced some of the glazing and the windows on the building, and in any case, where there are windows, they'll be adequately screened. There was originally a fire door, exit door closer to the residential area, and we wound up moving that to the Lincoln Street side so that there's absolutely nothing on the east elevation near the, and on the, and on the elevations that abut the neighborhood or the residential area. We've been working very closely with this particular community. Maybe I'll pause there, Mr. Chair, and see if there are any questions.
So this has more parking than the typical cannabis establishment. How many spaces underground and how many surface spaces?
They're all surface. It's funny, they're used to, there is underground in the existing structure. We will wind up discontinuing the underground space and just decking over the top of that so that we'll be able to fit a total of 11, as well as the, the delivery.
Well, okay, I'm, can you go back to the site plan? Your answer just confused me. I didn't quite.
Oh, sorry about that. So the previous.
There's a garage entrance, right?
Yeah, and you can see on the elevation as well, but the site plan is, is just as good. At the bottom of your screen, that's Lincoln Street.
Yeah.
So you'd enter right there in that lower left-hand corner where the arrows are, through the existing bay. There, there used to be, or there is today, if we went there, there's a ramp that goes into the basement of this building.
Yes, that's what I was asking about. So what's that going to be used for?
We'll get rid of that ramp. We're going to deck over that, and we'll just make it one floor. Yeah, yeah. And then when you go in, you go out, and you come around.
So, no, that I understand. Okay, so will the basement be used for storage now, or what will happen with the basement?
I, I really don't think we're going to do anything down in the basement. I think it will be discontinued. We didn't show it in the plans. You're going to have to deck over it. We're renting the building, so if presumably we ever have to turn this back to the landlord, we'll have to figure out what to do with the basement, maybe restore it to its current condition.
Okay. And what is the anticipation about foot traffic versus online ordering? I mean, you're, we now have enough experience with these stores to just, to have, to have a better approximation than I think we did, say, a year ago.
Yes, yeah. We're seeing a lot of, we're seeing about 50% online ordering because there's just such a variety of, of product, and the customer really wants to know. And if they don't have it at one store, they're going to go to another store. And then you're, you're seeing so many stores proliferate this area that the number is dropping of people per store to probably around the 200 number now, what we're seeing in the industry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good.
Are there any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to testify on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would go on record in support of this proposal. We conducted the city-run public meeting on February 6 of 2019, but subsequently since then, the applicant has met a number of times with the Alston Civic Association, and also conducted their own meetings with residents, using multiple different languages to ensure that they were reaching everyone. We think that this is an appropriate location. It's close to two bus lines, also not a far walk from Harvard Square. I used to live in the area. We think it's going to be a great opportunity to create jobs for local people in this part of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Before we take other testimony, Mr. Ross, the usual questions about proximity to other establishments, proximity to schools, et cetera.
Yeah, the closest, it clears all buffers. There are no buffers. The closest facility would be the Honan Library, probably close to 1,000 square feet, 1,000 feet away, and then, you know, maybe the man, the hor, the man school, probably close to 2,000, 3,000 feet away.
Okay. And, and your nearest establishment?
I'm well over half a mile, Mr. Chair. I'm actually, I'm trying to think right now. And I do think, we actually did provide some buffer images for you. You could probably see it if you want to pull it up, but, but well over half a mile, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, I'm sorry. Let's continue with the testimony.
Mr. Chair, I do have three raised hands if no one else.
Mr. Chair, before that, sorry, Jessica. We have three letters of opposition and one letter of support.
And the opposition is based on what, Mr. Fortune?
Opposition, young children in the neighborhood, residential, dense residential area, Honan Library. That's basically what was coming up.
Okay. Any other, before we take the raised hands, any other elected officials? Okay, Madam Ambassador, go to the raised hands then.
Okay, Kelly Moss, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and full address?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Kelly Moss. I live on 21 Warmwood in South Boston, so this is my community we're talking about. I just wanted to speak very quickly about.
Wait, wait, you live in South Boston?
Yeah.
What projects you looking at?
That's not this project. This project is in Alston Brighton.
Oh, sorry about that. Could I speak on behalf of someone who uses medical marijuana?
Not, not if you live in South Boston. There is a, there is a cannabis project coming up in South Boston later in the agenda.
I'm on the wrong, the wrong.
Yes, you're on the wrong.
Sorry, wasting time. I'll wait.
Okay.
Okay. Anthony, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and full address, please?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Alston Civic Association. This has been a tough one for us. The proponents have been before the community for a little over two years now, and based on the consensus of the membership of the association, no clear consensus was established either way. Those in opposition basically categorized their opposition under three areas: location, parking, and traffic. And with your indulgence, I'll talk real quick about each three, of, of all three. On the traffic side, as you know, there is considerable development planned in the North Alston, North Brighton, Cambridge Street corridor. That traffic is only going to get worse. The proponents, to their credit, listened to the community and, from their initial proposal, and decided to change it to have access from Cambridge Street on to Lincoln Street. But there are still ongoing concerns. It's a very compressed intersection there in front of the building, and there are still concerns that with all this development and people coming on and off the Mass Turnpike, that this will simply make situation, make the situation even worse. In terms of the location, it needs to be said that this, that this location directly abuts a family-oriented immigrant population. If you've seen any of the pictures of the site, you'll see these roll houses directly beside the establishment. I did get a call from a direct Butter this morning expressing, a lot of people there feel kind of powerless. They, they, you know, they're willing to put up with it if they have to, but they're not jumping up and down about the possibility of having a cannabis dispensary right next door to their home where a lot of their small children live. So, so that is.
All right. No, thank you, Tony. Thank you very much.
Okay, Victor, you've been unmuted. Can you state your phone name and address, please?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, City Council. This is Victor Sue, and I'm speaking on behalf of 255 and 253 Cambridge Street, and this represents the six families that abut and will live next to the proposed Union Twist project. And so thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. After speaking with just all the families, you know, they are in strong opposition for several reasons, and I'll just highlight two, and Tony was able to, you know, speak on behalf of, of some of this. But, you know, first, you know, this is a very residential, majority immigrant neighborhood. You know, the neighborhood's vibrant with school-aged children. There's children running around in the alley behind the building, around the building, in front of it, and the project will introduce, you know, to put frankly, weed smokers that will introduce crime, strong odors, vagrancy, and then interactions with, you know, the, the children there and the families.
We, we understand. So I think Tony made the point. We, we understand the concern about being in a residential neighborhood. Is there anything else?
You know, Union Twist is well-funded, it's venture capital-backed. You know, there's locations all over Boston, and given the amount of unoccupied retail and commercial, you know, we're just a little bit surprised that they would want to choose a residential immigrant neighborhood. The second is.
Yeah.
The, the second is just the, the parking. So, you know, it's already impossible to find parking in the neighborhood. Sometimes, you know, you're driving around for hours, and there aren't any real affordable parking options that are paid in the area.
Okay.
The, the addition of Twist, adding thousands of new visitors a day, you know, we commend that they've reduced the, the retail footprint, but there's an assumption that a reduction of the footprint is going to decrease the number of clientele, and that's a false assumption.
Okay, 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 okay. We got you. So there's the proximity in the residential neighborhood of immigrant, that community, and the issue of parking and, and density. Mr. Ross, can, can either you or the security or any of the other proponents who are here talk about the issue of security and how to keep people who are purchasers of the product from impacting the neighborhood? How, how you intend to handle that?
Yes, we can, Mr. Erlich. We, Mr. Chairman, we, we have traded multiple Good Neighbor agreements with Mr. Sue that included removing the emergency exit, providing cameras outside, allowing them to monitor their own cameras to audit that we're going to do what we say we're going to do. I thought we were very close to an agreement, but I think that there is definitely a stigma associated with the proposed use. I, we have, Dan Linsky's on the call as well. He's looked at the Good Neighbor Agreement, and I think you can hear it in, in the comments that we've really come a long way with this community, notwithstanding the underlying concern about the proposed use. The previous use here, it was automobile use with additional bays and entrances, I think two additional bays and entrances. They had cars going in and out every, all day, parking on the sidewalk. We're going to landscape the area. We're going to only have 11 internal cars. We're shrinking the, the footprint of the site, if you will. So we are addressing the issues that are raised. There will be people.
Mr. Ross, let me ask you a question. How many people do you anticipate at any given time working inside the establishment?
Working would be less than 12, probably closer to eight to 10. It's a very small study.
If you have 11 spaces and you have eight to 10 people, are they, are you assuming that the employees will be parking on the site?
No, we were going to do 100% subsidy of Blue Bikes membership, 100% subsidy of MBTA cards for our employees. We do not want our employees parking on site. That would be a horrible use of our, of our facility.
Okay. Is there any other, is there any other testimony? If not, I would entertain a motion from the board.
Motion approved with BPDAD design review.
For this applicant only.
For this applicant only, yeah.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Mr. Ross, I would really strongly encourage you to continue. Just because you got approval to not ease up on the notion of a Good Neighbor Agreement and continue to try to allay the fears of the Butters.
Understood, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, we've called it 11 o'clock. Can you go back to your extension so we can close that out? Is Mr. Ferrulo on?
Yes, he is.
Sorry?
Good morning.
Hold on a second, Mr. Ferrulo. Let me call into the record, then you can speak. They're calling the cases for extension from earlier this morning, 9:30, case BOA 805-9343, Snelling Place. There is a companion case, BOA 805-9323, Snelling Place. Mr. Chair, these did expire last week, 4/27/2021. If we grant this, this would be their second extension. Name and address for the record, please.
The nominee is William Ferrulo, attorney for the proponent, Don Cottier Miller. Apologize for not being on earlier. We had problems with my home computer, so I came to the office for this. We made this request on the last day of the, a lost extension. The proponent is an individual who's owned this building, his family's owned the building for many years, who simply has not been active during the COVID crisis, has restarted this, required, the first extension was due to the fact that it required some reengineering because there's one floor addition going on the building that slowed down that approval process. He's in the process now actually of requesting a demolition permit and proceeding with the approvals of the revised plan. So we would ask that we have one additional extension of this.
Okay, so, so Mr. Ferrulo is, we, you know, as you know, we're reluctant to give multiple extensions, but is it your assumption that with another, say, one-year extension that they could, they could move forward on the, we wouldn't hear from you again?
I, I definitely think so, and as noted, if the board decides to make this the last extension, there'd be no objection.
Okay, all right. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension from the date of expiration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you have the one-year extension, Mr. Ferrulo.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Fortune, I, I would like to adjourn for a few minutes, but you want to find out if there are any deferrals and withdrawals?
Yeah, if, if we're okay with that, that way I can take them out. For 11 o'clock hearings, it's now 11:17. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11 o'clock? If you can give me the address, please. Hearing on, I guess we could take a break.
Okay, so it's now 11:17. Let's take a five-minute break so we start again at 11:22. Let's take a five-minute break, so we start again at 11:22.
Hi, I am.
Okay, I think I see all of our board members. Mr. Fortune, should we go ahead with the 11 o'clock hearings?
We will do so, Mr. Chair. Last one more time. If anybody missed it, we're going to do deferrals or withdrawals for 11 o'clock only. If you haven't, please give me the address now. Hearing none, I'll call the first case, calling BOA 1146559, 456 Saratoga Street. This is to add a roof enclosing the deck on the first floor for the first-floor unit, enlarge the rear decks on the second and third floor, and add a new deck above. The violation, Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 9, Section 1, it's the extension of a 9 conforming U. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Doug Stepanov, architect, representing the owner of the building as well as the proponent, Pedro Morales. Dear all, thank you very much for hearing us today. We come before you with a request to add some living space to the back of the building and extend and build the decks in the back up higher. We did leaflet the area, did community review. We had two successful presentations to the Eagle Hill Civic Association, to which they approved the project. It's fairly small. The owner is also incorporating some improvements to the backyard. If you'd like, I could share my screen if you'd like, or show, we can go further on in the set.
Yeah, no, no, you can't share your screen. We'll just, we'll just use the drawings that are on the, on the screen now.
So what is currently a deck on the first floor? We'd like to enclose to become living space. The owner lives on the first floor, so it's approximately 150 square feet. Let's call that as new area on the first floor. They'll rebuild the decks on the back that are above that, which are in need of repair, and adding an additional deck on the top, which is where the height violation comes in. This, the building is currently nonconforming in FAR, so this little increase, of course, requires relief for floor area ratio. You can go to the next page, please. Yeah, that's just the architectural plan showing the decks. That's the large plans. Next, please. Those are the decks, yeah, the staircases. There's an elevation on the side showing the decks rebuilt and the new deck on the top. No change to the front, so there's no change to the street scope. Next, please. Those are the rear view. The site is ascending to the back. That's the tail end of Eagle Hill. So there's about an eight, nine-foot grade change in the back for the next street, and then the hill continues up. I'm informed that the client has now successfully purchased the land behind him from the city, which is currently in development. Next, please. Oh, he's a fire, no, next. Just some structural drawings. That's the project.
Okay, so Mr. Stepanov, when the, on the first floor, when it's enclosing the existing deck, is that the same footprint or is it enlarging it?
That's the same footprint as the existing deck.
Okay, so the rear yard setback violation, is that pre-existing?
Well, yes, it's 27.3 feet to the existing deck, correct.
So that's unchanged, it's still 27.3?
Yes, yeah, we don't change it.
Okay, and then were there, were there existing decks above that one or are they all new?
Yes, sir, there are existing decks on two and three.
Okay, so the only new deck, completely new deck is on the roof, which has the, the stairway is continuing up to that level?
Correct.
Okay, and is there any other work being contemplated as far as this proposal?
As mentioned, just landscaping, retaining all the rear yard. To beautify, the rear yard's in need of work.
Okay, all right. Is there a site plan, Collette? Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, we're doing some subsurface recharge, so that shows the tank in the backyard buried.
Okay, okay, all right, that's very good. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are fine. It would be great if Mr. Stepanov could just quickly, which I, probably not in our purview, but could you just please explain the basement unit? As you know, the board is not in love with basement units. I understand this is an existing condition, but it's an FAR issue. And I just want to make sure that, I guess, to the best of our ability, this is safe. And I'm just looking at it, I just want to make sure we understand that.
Yes, so the lower of the basement is an additional growing unit permitted under the ADU program. It is fully sprinkled and has two means of egress with proper bedroom emergency egress walls.
Well, that's not usually what our concern is, as Mr. Robinson's pointing out. As you know, Mr. Stepanov, we're concerned about below-grade living space. So what's the relationship of the basement? I recognize that this is a pre-existing, and as Mr. Robinson said, not necessarily in our purview, but I'm curious as to what the relationship is of the basement floor to the grade.
The front of the building is higher. The back of the building is lower. So the front is about three, four feet above grade.
It does fall off to the back, which I can see in the section. But I just want to make sure it's, it's legal and the egress is there, and it's helpful that the sprinklers are there. So that's all, I just want to make sure we were all clear on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no, I recognize that that's not part of what has come before us. We might, we might have a different view if it was, so. Okay, any other questions, Mr. Robinson?
Nope.
Any other questions on the board? Is there anybody here to testify on behalf of the applicant?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. In a trammelling with the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on the record in support for this proposal. During the community process, this proposal received strong support from Eagle Hill Civic Association and from the abutters. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor, Savi Juju's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have to raise hands if no one else is looking to speak.
Did I see somebody in chat?
Yes, yep, okay. Mark Corvey, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Mark Corvey. I live at 268 West Third Street on the corner of Third and F. Local residents of South Boston. I just want to express my support for this project. I have a lot of friends and relatives that use cannabis and.
This is not the cannabis project we're talking about.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah. Apparently, a lot of people want to talk about that one. Okay. Any other raised hands?
Yes, Pedro, are you here for this part? Is your hand raised for this project?
No.
Hi. Pedro, are you here to speak in support or opposition for this project?
Support. I'm here to speak in support.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, you were cut off. Can you state your full name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, my full name is Pedro Miguel Hibeiro Goncalves Murais. My address is the address of the property, 456 Saratoga Street.
Are you the owner, sir?
I'm the owner, yes, and I would.
Okay, so if you're the owner, if you're the owner, we're assuming you're in favor. That would be, that would be surprising if you weren't. We don't need that testimony, thank you.
I also have a Kelly Ross. Kelly, are you looking to speak in support or opposition for this project?
No, I'm talking about the, I'm waiting to talk about the South Boston project.
So for everyone who has their hand raised, this is related to this project.
Lower your hand, please. Okay, I gather there's no more testimony. Can I have a motion, please?
Approve.
Second.
I, that broke off, what was the motion?
A motion to approve, straight approval.
Do we need BPDA design review, Jeff?
No, not at all.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1146206, 342 Meridian Street. This is, change occupancy to a four-unit residential dwelling. Renovate the lower unit. The violation is Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 2017, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 53, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Vazberg LLC. Beth McDougall, the architect for the project, is also with me. Probably easiest thing to do is jump right to the street view to take a quick look at these row houses. This is perfect right here. Mr. Chair, this is located in the MFR District, multifamily residential, which we are proposing and is, would be in allowed use. The unit is in the lower level. However, this, not unlike others that we've done for adjoining properties here, has a full walkout to the rear and a sub-basement underneath of that. So probably the best way to approach is to look at the rear portion of the building. If we could just move down to the next slide or so. One more, maybe one more. Perfect. So what we're seeing here is the rear portion of the building, which does, as I expressed, is above actually the rear grade of the property. There is a sub-basement below that. The floor-to-ceiling height for this level is over eight feet. And I would also, I think if you jump to the next slide as well, it shows the location of windows for that level. Perfect. So typically, while that lower level would be below the grade of Meridian Street, it's above grade again for the back portion of the property. And our floor plan, and the layout of our floor plan has taken into account the full access for these windows and for the ability to use those as proper egress windows. Can you go to the next slide, please? So just our section plan showing, again, the sub-basement that is below the basement level is about five feet 10 inches. And then the basement level, which we're proposing for the additional unit, is eight feet 4 inches, so more than enough than is required in the building code. Next slide, please. So our proposed plan shows this is a two-bedroom. There is sufficient egress out the rear as well as the front of the building. And then where we are proposing bedrooms, we do have the windbreakers, which comply with the egress requirements under the building code. So although I understand the board's position when it comes to low-grade units, this, based upon its location on Meridian Street and the slope between Meridian and Border Street, this actually is pretty much above grade towards the rear portion of the building. Next slide, please. That might issue the last slide. So with respect to the relief that's necessary, as I said, this is in the MFR District, and therefore multifamily, four units is allowed as a matter of right. The relief that we require relates to the floor-to-air ratio, the additional space, which already exists, which would otherwise be storage or basement space, is the space that's being converted. We request a variance for that. And then the additional unit would trigger a requirement for one additional parking space. And again, the existing units do not have any parking presently. This is located on a bus line, and we feel that the impact from trying to create additional off-street parking for this certainly is outweighed by the variance that's being proposed. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so right now, what is the basement being used as?
It's just basement space, basement storage.
For, for all of the units above?
That's correct.
And what, and what would happen with storage for them if this were to be approved?
I think we still have a little bit of space. If we can jump back to that floor plan, we do have a little space in the area for storage. And this is a rental building, so this is not intended to be sold as additional, as individual condo units. So the storage is more of a convenience and not necessarily something that's a part of it to the units.
Okay, it would help, it would have been helpful on that slide with the proposed site and section plan. On this, I understand that this is, like many projects that we deal with, it has a sloping topography. But it, you know, you show the, you show the elevation, the sections from the sub-basement and the basement, from floor to ceiling, and that's helpful, but there, there's nothing shown in relation to grade. And I understand that toward the back part, you know, it's slightly above grade, and toward the front part, it's below grade. But it's, but from these plans, at least, maybe Mr. Robinson can say different, but I can't tell where what is what, where what's below grade, what's not, how much, et cetera.
I can, I may be able to shed a little bit of light, Mr. Chairman. If you look at the bedroom that's closest to the front portion, maybe almost mid- If you look at the bedroom that's closest to the front portion, maybe almost midway back on the right side, where it shows proposed plan, it shows egress as the window. That is the point in the photo that I showed you, that is well above the grade of the rear portion of the property. So the grade does drop dramatically towards Border Street. I would suggest probably somewhere about an eighth to maybe a quarter of the way back from the front portion of the building.
And how many square feet is this proposed unit?
780 square feet.
780, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine, and you're correct, there isn't as much information. But with a little bit of digging, it does appear to be an above-grade, below-level unit. But it does look like it should be fine in terms of our concerns.
Okay. Any questions on the board? All right, is anyone here to... Go ahead, sir.
Is there parking in the rear of the building?
Good question, Mr. Chair. There is the available... I believe other adjoining properties have access to parking. We're not proposing any parking back there. That's a separate use of premises permit. We feel that it's a little too congested for parking behind this property. Also, that provides the required means of egress to a public way, which would egress out onto the public way to the right of the property. So we're not proposing to use that for parking, but there is access to the rear portion of the property.
Okay.
I'm confused by that answer, Mr. Lynn. If you look at the site plan, the porches extend almost to the lot line. I mean, there's really a pretty small rear yard setback.
There's a right-of-way, I don't know if I have the map here, but there's a right-of-way behind all of those properties there that's others use for parking.
And there's, like, if you look at an aerial view of the property, there's cars parked directly behind the building.
On both sides?
On, yeah.
To the right of us, Mr. Chairman, is a very large multifamily apartment building. To the left of us are similar rowhouse-style buildings, where we've also converted to lower-levels.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Is there anyone here to testify on behalf of the proposal?
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support for this proposal. This proposal received support from Eagle Hill Civic Association and from the Abidus. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in...
Mr. Chair, we have six letters of support.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of South Bay George's office. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Hampton, is a BPDA want to weigh in on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we've recommended denial on this because of the bedroom in the basement. We understand that there have been similar proposals on this stretch of Meridian. But right now, our recommendation was based on the sighting of the bedrooms in the basement. I also know that it's a walkout out back, so... But that's our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other hands raised?
No raised hands, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make...
I'll make a motion to support.
Yeah, I just, I was wondering if we could put a proviso or something in that we put some bollards or something back there to protect cars from parking against the egress in the rear. That was my concern.
I have no issue with that, Mr. Jarryo.
So I'll make a motion to support with the notion of protecting the egress path to the public way through bollards.
Mr. Robinson, Mr. Jarryo, am I doing that through a design review? Or is that just something that Council Lins will be able to take care of if there isn't any other exterior?
Hopefully, Council Lins can take care of it with the building inspector.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1121528, 241 Lexington Street. This is to construct a new roof deck. Violation is Article 53, Section 9, insufficient area setback. And Article 53, Section 52, the proposed roof deck, not on a main roof, to include access. Name and address for the record, please. Is Lexington Street on 241 Lexington Street?
I see the name of the applicant on the attendee list, and they don't have any messages.
Your onomatopoeia, Alameda?
Sam. Lina, do you know what the applicant's on?
No, just a kind of station here.
Will come back. We'll go to the next case. Calling BOA 118114858 Burbank Street. This is erect a new seven-story residential building. The first floor will consist of an amenity of office space. Floors two to seven will consist of residential dwelling units. Each dwelling unit will have a projecting exterior deck. Violation is Article 32, Section 4, this is G-Cod. Groundwater Conservation overlay district. Article 66, Section 42, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 66, Section 8, offices used, forbidden. Article 66, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 66, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 66, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the board. Mark Lacass. My office is Lacass Law LLC at 75 Arlington Street in Boston. I represent Haycon Inc., who is also on the call through its president, Patrick Hayden. This is a proposal to fill in a long-neglected vacant parcel along Burbank Street in the Fenway neighborhood. The slide shown on the screen shows the context of the neighborhood. The round building on the left is the Whole Foods Market near Symphony Hall. And the proposed project is mid-block on Burbank Street, and literally for 40 years has been an abandoned vacant blighted parcel. And the proposal is to erect a new seven-story modern structure on this site. Next slides, there's more context. Again, mid-block, immediately adjacent to the Fenway Community Development Corporation, which we've worked very closely with in developing the proposal for this property. And the ground floor use, which is one of our zoning items, there are three office/work pod spaces on the ground floor of the building, which will be shared with the community through Fenway CDC for community purposes, again, which is right next door to the proposed project. There's the vacant storefront there, where the new building will be constructed. Next slides. More neighborhood context. The architecture is contemporary in nature, but draws on a lot of the elements of the neighborhood context, a variety of styles that are represented on this block of Burbank Street. Mr. Chair, there is a G-Cod applicability, and we do have our Article 32 letter from Bosse Water and Sewer and the No Harm Letter. Would you like to address that issue first?
Yeah, let's take care of that first. Christian, are you on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Christian Semenelli, Bosse Groundwater Trust, and yes, we have both the Bosse Water and Sewer approval and No Harm Letters.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we do not have the letter on file.
Mr. Fortune, that came yesterday. I'll be sure to send it in to ISD Board of Appeal.
Okay, so can we have a motion to approve pending receipt of the letter?
So most.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so let's move on to the merits of the project.
With respect to the merits of the project, the proposal is to construct a new seven-story, seven-year building. There will be five one-bedroom units, one two-bedroom unit, and one three-bedroom unit, which this applicant will occupy as an owner-occupied residence for his family. They live in the neighborhood and will specifically move into the penthouse unit, which is two and a half floors at the top of the building for the owner occupant. No residential use in the basement level. There's one parking space shown in the back of the building. It's a fairly tight alley back there. The Fenway CDC and some of the other buildings do park back there. So one parking space was pretty much the most we could get back there. But it is, of course, a walkable neighborhood, and there is a large bike storage room on the lower level as well. The zoning violations, first one is the insufficient parking. Five would have been required for the seven units, and we're showing the one with the large bike storage room. The proposed amenities/office spaces that will be shared with the community on the ground floor. Technically, they're not commercial office spaces, but it was cited for a office uses are forbidden, so we would need a variance for that proposed use. The remaining three items are dimensional in nature. The floor area ratio maximum in the MFR sub-district is 4.0, and the proposal is 5.26. The usable open space requirement is 100 square feet per dwelling unit. We have included a small balcony at the rear of the building for most of the units. Five of the seven units have a little rear balcony in the back of the building to provide some usable open space. Lastly is rear yard insufficiency. 20 is the code requirement. However, this is a narrow lot, so the narrow lot exception applies. 11.6 would be required, and we're providing eight.
Since you're getting to eight, too.
I'm sorry?
Okay, I'm not sure what that was. So Lacass, a few questions.
Yes.
What are the size of the units?
So the units on the second, third, and fourth floor are 400 square feet and 500 square feet in the front and back. The unit on the fifth floor is a floor-through. And then the penthouse unit, which is half of five, six, and seven, is 2,300 square feet.
So how many units are 400?
Three of them are 400.
So those, I mean, those technically are micro-units.
Right, and part of the design concept incorporated into this proposal with the common amenity space on the ground floor, the large bike storage room, mirror, the compact unit policy. But technically, the compact unit policy only applies to buildings with 10 or more units. So we didn't specifically proceed under that process.
No, I understand, but if you're not proceeding under that process, then these are sub... Then these are, you know, below the typical requirements of the... Are these studios? One bedroom, one of the... I mean, 400 square feet is small.
It is small. They're cleverly designed one-bedrooms. And if you'd like, Mr. Hayden could weigh in on the design concepts. But it's also a really small lot. It's a 1,600-square-foot lot and very narrow. So it has been designed with those concepts in mind. It's also a very high-energy efficient type building with cross-laminated timber construction.
Yeah, okay, all right. All that's fine. I'm focused on the size of the units right now. So typically, again, and even though it's not the 10 units, typically when the city policy has been, there's a substandard unit size, then that's accommodated by community space, amenity space. So could you describe what the space would get used for? I mean, I'm looking at the ground floor floor plan, and there's a big chunk donated to parking. There's not a lot of other... I mean, there's not a lot of square footage here.
Well, there are the two smaller work pod areas, which are common to the building. And then there's a large conference room in the front, which would be primarily the one shared with the Fenway CDC for community events. So essentially, this front half...
So you've got two work pod units, basically, that are dedicated to the building. And how does that work? What are they used for? And how do people get access to it?
They would be used for, you know, home office-type space. And the larger one would also be available, except when it's being used by the Fenway CDC.
Right, so I don't think... So that's not permanently allocated to the use of the tenants in the building?
Well, yes and no. It was part of the...
No, I said permanently. The answer was no.
Not exclusively, not exclusively, correct.
Okay, so how do people get access to the work pod? Is it a sign-up time? How does that happen?
Patrick, do you want to weigh in on that? I don't think those kind of micro...
Yeah, we would use a software, co-working software called CoBot, where people can use the internet to basically reserve it and use their phones to access the spaces. Our office building room at now is set up in that manner. And that's how we would share it also with the Fenway and the neighbors, the residents of the building. I guess I'd also like to point out that the narrowness of the lot and the requirements structurally to position the cores where they are sort of lends to dividing the floor on those two floors to two units. It would make an awkward, an awkward one unit. So where the cores are shown are sort of where they're required to be structurally, to build such a narrow building.
Okay, all right. All right.
If I could chirp in here?
Yeah.
I mean, I know they're using the compact units, you know, size threshold for, you know, guidance on this, but metro units through the BPDA for a one-bedroom, 625.
Yes.
And for D and D projects, they're 600.
Yep.
So, I mean, these are small for not being a compact unit project.
Very small. Can I chime in, Jeff, that the project is very much in line with Article 37, sustainability, carbon famliness?
I understand that, but that's not what we're talking about.
Okay, yeah. Okay, let me move on to another question before I ask Mr. Robinson to wing it. I understand from a contemporary design, it's in the middle of... Somebody's... Son of a back... Yeah, thank you, whatever, whoever that was. There's a... I don't know if it's a rose between two thorns or how to describe it, but it certainly seems to be, the contemporary design does not seem to be consistent with the context. Curious what you think about that.
Well, I think I've made my position clear on contemporary design today. But, you know, I think, you know, I did look at the context of it. Obviously, there are much larger buildings around. It is a very thin site. I can appreciate the complexity of trying to meet all the code requirements for egress and sort of accessibility in this sort of thin moment. So, you know, I think that design review would be warranted with the BPDA, but I, you know, I understand there's some challenges associated with the size of the units. However, it will be a new building. I appreciate the one slide in terms of its sustainability approach. I think that's something that we aren't seeing enough of in the city these days, and I think this is something... Is this going through the passive house design process? Is that what this is?
Yes.
So, sorry, I couldn't get muted off. We're not going for passive certification, but it's very much in line with all... Several of our projects are, and we're applying as many strategies as we can. Frankly, the complexity of this size project to go for the certification is not worth it. But for all practical purposes, it will meet the design standards.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions on the board? Okay, again, whoever is that is, if you could mute yourself, it would make life better.
Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Singal.
Yes.
We've asked him to mute, but he has not muted himself.
Let me see if I can help him. Sorry, I'll have to move.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Is there anybody to testify on behalf of the project?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Joe Coppinger with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. We have received a number of letters of support from Director Butters, as well as local neighborhood associations. That should be on the record board. Thank you.
Mr. Coppinger, are you concerned about the size of the units? Mr. Coppinger?
We're basing our support off the community support, not the use of the lot.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Mr. Jeff.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is Vijay Singal. I would like to speak in opposition when you give me a turn.
Oh, okay, I'm sent, let me.
Okay, first, first, let me see if there are any other elected officials who, who want to speak? No?
Mr. Chair, before Mr. Singal speaks, we do have letters of opposition and we do have a few letters of support. And the opposition basically is the size of the building, density, office space. And Mr. Singal's an owner, I believe, that's where he's speaking, a building he owns behind it.
Okay, Mr. Singal, would you put your name and address on the record and then let us know the reason for your opposition?
Okay, good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Vijay Singal. I own the building at 73 Westland Avenue, which is almost exactly opposite the proposed structure. And my opposition is based on several factors. One is parking. Parking in that alley is illegal and is a safety hazard. I realize that Fenway CDC contractors and office workers park in that alley, but that hinders fire, ambulance, people from getting in there in case of an emergency.
Okay, okay. What are your other concerns?
My other concern is the building is going to stand out like a sore thumb because it's seven story and all the adjoining buildings in front, back, on both sides are four story. And it'll cast shadows and block sunlight in the alley. That alley has garbage pickup, so there's smells, there's insects, and blocking sunlight would, would prevent natural disinfection from taking place and create more rodents and rats and mice. And, and also none of the buildings in the area have balconies, rear balconies. So the proposal is, is going to make the neighborhood non-homogeneous. I mean, it's a nice neighborhood of Victorian houses, making a contemporary building that seven story high in a four story neighborhood, I think destroys the character and ambience of that neighborhood.
Okay, all right, so we have, we have the parking density and historical context and design. Thank you very much. Anybody else to testify?
Mr. Chair, I have no additional raise hands at this moment.
Okay, then I guess it's time for a motion from the board.
May I briefly respond, Mr. Chair?
No, I'd soon go for a motion.
Okay. Can I just ask for one, Mr. Chairman, can I ask for one clarification? And I'm sorry if I missed this. Can we just confirm the zoning relief needed for this project? I don't think we went through the, there was a zoning table in the package. I just want to make sure we, we all understand what the zoning regulations are for this building and the proposal very quickly.
Mr. Lookhouse?
Yep, so Gcod, which we've covered, off-street parking insufficient, a use violation for the proposed office space on the street level, and then three dimensional requirements, FAR excessive, usable open space and rear yard insufficient.
So height, height is not a violation?
Height is not a violation. The maximum height in this neighborhood is 75 feet and this building is less than the maximum height, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I mean, I'd like to make a motion to approve what BPDA design review to give some look at the, the floor plans and the layouts and the size of the units.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm opposed, but the motion passes.
Thank you.
Got a call on the next case, calling VOA 1151392, 22 Castleton Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two to a three residential building and creation of a new third floor unit in the attic. An additional rear access, the violation Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 8, the 3F and a 2F zone is forbidden. Article 55, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the building has excessive stories. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, my office is LaCasse Lot LLC, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. I represent the homeowner, Anita Larsella, who is also on the call, and the architect, Robert Larsella, who has designed this unit for his sister. The proposal is to change the occupancy of this two-family to a 3F dwelling by turning the attic space into an owner occupied unit for Ms. Larsella. She currently lives on the ground floor of the building, has lived here for 30 years, but is downsizing as she wishes to, as she puts it, age in place in her smaller unit in the attic of the building that she owns and would rent out the lower two floors for a source of income. This is achieved by adding a front dormer, a small doghouse style dormer in the front, and then two shed dormers on either side of the building. The zoning violations are off-street parking is insufficient by virtue of adding the additional dwelling unit. However, she does not have a car and indicates that there is a tandem space existing on the property currently. The use of 3F in a 2F zone requires relief. The maximum FAR in this subdistrict is .6. By adding the additional unit, it brings the FAR to .7. The building height, number of stories maximum in this subdistrict is two and a half. By adding the dormers, it creates a full third floor, so a variance is required for that. We were cited for side yard insufficiency, which is an existing condition and not exacerbated by this proposal, but merely cited because it's an existing condition. The minimum is 10 feet and the existing condition is 7.7 feet on the side. There's also on this slide, you can see on the right-hand side, a new rear stairway is being added for code compliant access to that new unit on the third floor for a second means of egress in the back of the building. And that bumps out slightly into the rear yard, but does not itself create any zoning That is the gist of the proposal. There are some other slides that show neighborhood context, which inspired the idea, there are lots of dormers, both doghouse style in the front and shed dormers on the side on other buildings in the immediate vicinity. And Anita did a great job talking to all of her neighbors and going to all of the associations and representing all the reasons that she wants to stay in her house and create a, a unit for herself on the third floor.
Okay, thank you. Do you, do we have slides on neighborhood context? Cause that was my question in terms of the height, the height variance. Is this going to stick out like a sore thumb in terms of?
No, no, I'm not sure that the, the, the package with the context photos, but the buildings immediately to the left and the right of her building have dormers. There was at least a dozen photos showing the context of this particular neighborhood with lots of dormers, so it is very much consistent with what a lot of other folks have done and inspired her idea, in fact. And here's the rear stair, rear stair enclosure shown in the back. And working with the neighborhood, there were some, you know, minor design changes to window alignments to accommodate privacy issues and things of that nature.
Okay, how about the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are, are good. I mean, I think in terms of the context, I did review that. There, it is true, you know, a lot of the houses do have dormers and additions. They don't appear to rise above the main ridge as this one does. And I'm not sure exactly the need for that, if it's just a head height issue or not, but it's a little different, but there is consistency in some respect, but it's a little bit different.
And, and Mr. Robinson, I think that that item is well suited for design review because the Jamaica Pond Association had the same issue. And we, in fact, presented a drawing which showed that a portion of the dormer was reduced to match the roof line in the front and be less visible. So we, we'd be amenable to having that specifically included as part of the design review as, as it was addressed with.
But Mr. LaCasse, that modification is not reflected in the drawings that we have, is it?
That's right.
Okay, well, I, you know, we always like to have, we always like to review the actual drawings that are being proposed as opposed to previous iterations, so. Mr. Hampton, I think the BPDA weighed in on this one, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We recommended denial without prejudice only because, not so much for the, the dormer additions, because it, you know, I, when you look at the street context, everybody's almost the same. There's a, there's a one or there's a one family, a couple of one families on the street, but for the most part, most of, you know, the two families are, you know, carbon copies of one another. We recommended denial because of the use, because it's mostly, I'd say 95%, if not more, one or two families on that street. And, you know, the zoning goes with the property. So this would be a three family, I think there might be one other three family on the street. So we're not opposed to the dormer addition, we're opposed to the use.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions on the board? Is there anyone who wants to testify in favor of the project?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And the Butters meeting was held on December 17, 2020, where the neighbors were supportive of the proposal. The applicant received non-opposition from the Jamaica Pond Association, also received the support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. So the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is Peter Prasorito from the Speaker, Councilman Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, we do have a few support letters.
Okay, does anyone want to testify in opposition or in favor or any testimony?
All right, I do have a hand raised on Anthony, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address, please?
Hello, my name is Anthony Dreyfus. I live at 18 Castleton Street, just a couple doors up from the proposed project. We've had a number of, of neighbors who have all been in support of the project. We think it's wonderful to add living space, even if that is beyond the two-family limit in the neighborhood, because living space is in such short supply, it's particularly valuable if it allows Anita to stay in her home by just moving upstairs and stay in the neighborhood, she's a valued neighbor, and this would be a great living space for her. We think all the zoning and use restrictions are much less important than that human concern, which is allowing a, a neighbor to stay in the neighborhood and in her building. So we would strongly urge you to support the project and not let the, the rules get in the way of what looks like a, a great development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Just to make the point that, as we always make, which is that the decisions go with the property and not with the individual. So regardless of a sympathy for the situation, we need to respond to, to the property itself and what will happen in the future. Any, any other testimony?
I do have two additional hand raised, I just, but it looks like it's for the previous project.
Yeah, we need to, I just saw on the chat about that, we need to, we need to address that, but let's finish this case first.
Okay.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to support with BPDA design review, specifically looking at the, the height of the dormer and the addition.
Excuse me, I don't know, I'm out of lines. Can I put Councilor Ivy George's name in support of this project, please? Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Robinson made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
What will?
The motion passes.
Thank you so much.
In the chat, Madam Ambassador, there's a couple of people who said that they wanted to speak on 58 Burbank and they, their hands are raised and they were not called. Were you, did you see that or were you aware of that?
Yes, so there was also emails coming in from people who were trying to get access. So I've been trying to manage a couple of sites here, but I, I did, once I saw that, I wanted to make sure they would acknowledge. Ashina, what?
Okay, I, you know, I really wish we, I, I, I mean, I think there were some problems with that, with that proposal, and I really wish we had gotten additional testimony, but we have acted and we did vote and we voted in favor. And what I would like to do is to make sure that those people who were in the chat have their comments read, part of the record, please.
Okay.
And Mr. Ehrlich, we're happy to be in touch directly with those folks. There, there really was a strong amount of working with the Fenway Civic Association and the Fenway CDC, so we're happy to continue that process. This has been a very much a collaborative effort with the neighborhood and we are committed to that.
Okay, well, let's, let's hope that's successful.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling VOA 1163154360 North Park Street. This is construct a new second story addition to an existing auto body shop creating a new office space. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conforming use, and Article 60, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, I'm one of the principals of our CALLC located 1156 to Chesterav, we are the project architects. The proposal here is to construct a new partial second story addition, which really only happens in the center of the building, and to pick up the height of the lower roof that you can see illustrated on this photograph here. We met with the Rock Civic Association and in the Butters meeting, the project was well received by the neighbors. The owner, Marty Patchuski, who's on the call today, is well-liked and respected in the community. Actually, as a result of this process with redefining our community, Marty has committed to work with the Life Skills Training and Wellness Center to provide some educational benefits to our local community members and students that may be interested in, in, in auto body and mechanics. So the proposal here before you, as you can see, this is the, the aerial representation of the slight side. If you go to the next slide, please, thank you. There's no change to the footprint of the building, so it occupies much of the site now, we would not be changing that. And you can see the dotted indication here towards the right end of this plan illustrates the proposed addition at the second floor, which is approximately 30 foot nine by 15 foot six and a half. And the height of the building at the gable end of the addition will be 24 feet. The only violation here is the extension of the non-conforming use and the parking loading requirement. This addition will actually allow Marty to have some more space in his garage on the interior for additional lifts and workspace. So we think that this will actually have a benefit to his loading area and parking that he uses now. Go to the next slide, please. So on the, on the interior of the first floor, we would rework the entrance and the waiting area to have a new seating area and ingress and egress stair. There's a slight elevator platform there. And then on the second floor, we would just create two new offices, as you can see, approximately 15 by 15 each, to create administrative space for the garage to, to house the business aspect of the operation. Next slide.
Since there are an odd number of tickets.
So in elevation here, you can see the, the grave masonry is the infill of the new building. And then above the sign in the center is where that new office space would be located. And then this would have, this project would include a renovation of the existing elevations and facade, so that this would be largely a new building with minimal changes and minimal impact to the community. Next slide, please. There we go, that's largely it.
Okay, so the zoning violations consist of extension of non-conforming use? And what else? Off-street parking?
Off-street parking.
And loading, okay. All right, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Sorry, the drawings are, are good.
Okay, any questions on the board? Anyone here to testify on behalf of the applicant?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I don't think people hear from the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Proposal received support on behalf of the Woodrow Ave. Proposal receives support on behalf of the Woodrow Avenue Neighborhood Association, as well as redefining our community's on Civic Association with letters of support. I can send it to the board, thank you.
Anyone else? Any representative of the city council offices?
I have no raised hands, or?
Okay, so there's no, no raised hands at all, nobody else wants to testify on behalf of the project or against. Okay, can I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to support with BPDA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling next case, calling BOA 116-3311, 110 to 112 Tunnel 1 Street. This is combining two lots into a newly created single lot to be 8,415 square feet, change of occupancy from a two-family to a four-family, finishing the basement as a unit and modifying the third floor to make a fourth unit. Construct a new rear addition for enclosed egress stairs on the rear of the house to propose off-street parking, eight off-street parking spaces. The violation to Article 65, Section 8, a four-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8.2, dwelling units in the basement are forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient, and Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Sun Nguyen, and the address is 1101 Tunnel 101 Street. So I'm looking to convert a two-family to a four-family. I have enough space for parking and, and I'm looking to make more available spaces for, for the.
What?
The crisis, the housing crisis in Boston.
And we have questions?
The basement will, will have exits in the front and in the back, and it will have exits for the bedrooms as well.
Okay, can you talk about what the zoning violations are?
The zoning violation is there's not enough space in the back to, to make the porch, and there's not enough space on the left side of the house, but that's an existing situation.
And the, and tell us about the unit sizes within the new proposal.
Each floor would have about, about, about 1,000 to 1,500 square feet of living space.
Okay, okay.
Closer to 1,500 than 1,000.
Okay, and I don't know if you're aware, but we're concerned about, so you want, right now, what is the function of the bedroom?
Hello? Hello, yes. Well, right now, on the first floor, there's three bedrooms.
No, 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 I'm asking, I'm asking the existing, what's the use of the basement?
It's just storage.
Okay, so you are proposing to take that basement floor plan and turn it into a, an additional unit, correct?
Yes, I think you have to go up or down, let me see.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out our usual, if you've been before this board before, if you're familiar with it, we're concerned about living space in the basement if it's below grade and underground. I'm looking at A11 on the, the drawings, and it's a little hard to tell. It's, 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 well, that's a section. I don't know, Mr. Robinson, can you, can you interpret what the floor-to-ceiling height is?
Unfortunately, no, Mr. Ehrlich, and there seems to be some discrepancy in the, even on the elevations and of the existing photos, in terms of, I'm sorry, the existing condition of the, of the, can't quite tell, can't quite tell, to be honest.
There's, there's, the, the minimum of seven, right now, it's, has the minimum of seven square, seven feet height, and I'm looking to dig down a little bit more to make it eight feet.
Okay, so, so the good, there's good news and bad news there. The good news is that by digging down, you will meet the building code, because it has to be seven foot six at a minimum, the bad news is that you're further below grade by digging down. I'm, I don't know, Mr. Robinson, I'm a little reluctant to go forward without more detail on the drawings.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was sort of wondering a little bit if, I would like to make a motion maybe to defer this for a little bit more information in the drawing and the application, so we can review this more properly.
Yeah, I, maybe I'll have the, the architect come on next time.
That would be good, I think, and have, make sure that he submits a set of drawings with more data on it than the current set has.
And I think, I think also, just a couple, there's, there's, seems to be two curb cuts, one to where you're parking, and I think there's also a question of screening and buffering of the parking area is not consistent, so maybe you could take that up with your architects and, and bring us some information back next time on that.
Okay, so Mr. Robinson, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
On a date of July 13 at 12:30. July 13 at 12:30.
Okay, so that's the next meeting for me?
Yep.
Okay, July 13 at 12:30. Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, before we call Washington Street, we're approaching the 12:30, we're already past the 11:30 recommendation, so what I'm going to do is do a couple of things after we do this next case before we hit K Street.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I mean, we've got two more in this thing, and then I think we'll probably take a break, so, so why, yeah, but that would be, that would be.
I'm going to talk, I'm going to call Washington Street, then we have a case that we haven't, that the opponents are here, so let me call Washington Street into the record, calling BOA. Did anybody get muted, please? Calling the next case in for the record, calling BOA 116-6231, 3815 Washington Street. This is, the ground occupies the first floor of an existing building, wants to expand to the second floor. This is in a neighborhood shopping, as per Article 55, Table B, calls for the educational use conditional on the second floor, they're seeking to change the use of the second floor from office to education. The violation is Article 55, Section 16, the school use second story is both is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi there, my, my name is Scott Given, and I'm the founder and owner of the Croft School, located at 3815 Washington Street in Boston. We're a new, small, private, independent school that opened this past fall. Currently, in our first school year in operation, we serve 50 students in preschool, pre-kindergarten and kindergarten, with a very significant waitlist for all those grades. We'll be enrolling 120 students this coming school year, and had two times the number of applicants than we have seats available. We're moderately priced private school that also has extensive financial aid available, ensuring a socio-economically diverse student body. We're intending to expand the school one grade level at a time over the coming years into a preschool through grade six school. The summary of our variance request, the school already occupies the ground floor and first floor of the building. The second floor above Croft became vacant during COVID, and we want to expand within the building. It had most recently been office space for a nonprofit organization. The property is in the JP zoning district, and school use is conditional on the second floor and above, therefore applying for change of use from business to education that would allow Croft to occupy that level. Without this variance, we'd anticipate that our school would serve approximately 220 students within seven years. With this variance, we'd be able to expand the school to approximately 270 students over the next seven years. One final, small but important thing of note is that as part of our proposed lease that we have with the owner of the building, inclusive of this expanded space, we would have access to additional access parking spots, two lots to the south of 3815 Washington Street, which is a building also owned by our building owner. And we do do our morning and afternoon drop-offs and pickup across long time windows, so there's never a surge in parking need or traffic at any one particular time. I'm on with our architect Stephanie Morrison, if she wanted to add anything or if there are any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Given, just a couple of questions, exactly where on Washington Street is this located?
So we are just, I'd say about a half, quarter, quarter to a third of a mile to the south of the Forest Hills T Station, we're right on the Roselanddale Jamaica Plain Line.
Okay, all right, okay, I know exactly where you are then. So you're not, so there's really no change to the building, the footprint of the building, the envelope of the building, right? It's simply a question of expanding up to the additional floors, so this is really, from the point of view, violations is a question of use, not of any, any design changes you're making.
There's no exterior design changes to this space.
All right, okay, well, knowing that, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to testify on behalf of the project?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe Coffin, Joe with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support of this proposal. They went through the community process, we've heard no concerns from the Butters, and they have also received support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is Peter Favrito from City Council Matt O'Malley's office, the council would also like to go on record and support, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office, like to go on record and support, thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council, Lodge Michael Flaherty, council would like to go on record and support.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we have one letter of support.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Oh, is that someone in opposition? Okay, no, I just heard a late, a late camera act, okay, very good.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I got to go back to the Lexington Street, I'm going to call it back into the record, calling BOA 112-1528, 241 Lexington Street. Is that they on? Is Mr. Alameda on?
What's the name?
241 Lexington Street.
I don't see his name in the chat.
All right, I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice, it is now 12:30, three.
I'll second.
There was a hand, a hand raised, I just want to get to, Per, hi, Per?
Yes.
Are you here for this case?
Yes, I'm the homeowner, and.
Washington Street, sir?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, hold on two seconds, then I'm going to take my motion back.
Because I have the architect, he should be online here.
Hold on, sir, hold on, sir, let me read it into the record. It's BOA 1121-528-241 Lexington Street. This is construct a new roof deck, the violation to Article 52, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback, and Article 53, Section 52, the proposed roof deck on the main roof to include access. Name and address for the record, please, thank you.
My name is Perone, I am the homeowner of 241 Lexington Street, apartment three.
Okay, can you tell us what you're proposing?
Yeah, so what we are proposing here is to build a roof deck on the third floor, next to an already existing roof deck on the building next door. The access to the roof deck will be from, from unit three, entering out to, to the roof.
And the access to the roof deck is what, through a sliding glass door, but off the, how, how do you get out to the roof deck?
By, by, by a sliding door, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
If you will, I'm sorry, if you will architect this, actually, I had technical issues, I was able to join.
Perfect, here's my architect, he can talk, yeah.
Okay, so we're looking, we're looking at a roof deck that is not on the, the top roof of the building, but is on the lower level, and the access is straight out of door from the third floor, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The hinged, hinged door, access to the back, to the rear.
Okay, hinged, okay, not a slider, a hinged door, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
The drawings are good.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is there anyone to testify on behalf of the proponent?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board, in a tremendous way, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on the record in support for this proposal. During the community process, this proposal receives strong support from Eagle Hill Civic Association and from the Butters, thank you.
Good afternoon, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards, the council would also like to go on the records.
Good afternoon, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office, would like to go on record and support, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have a hand raised, Mark, do you have a hand before that? No, okay, Rory, you've been unmuted, are you here to speak for this case? Rory Williams?
Sorry, I'm actually for the next case.
Okay, can you lower your hand, please, thank you. Okay, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to support.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's any need for design review on this.
No, I don't want it either. It's all good.
Okay, is there a second? We've got some rumbling noise, there we go, thank you. Is there a second, Mr. Robinson's motion?
I'll second and motion.
All those in favor?
Second. Okay.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right, Mr. Chair, before we call K Street, because I think we're going to be on call for a little while with this one, I need to call into the recommendations then, and then I'm going to do to the 12:30 for any deferrals and withdrawals, and then we'll go back to K Street. I'm going to do the recommendations right now, this was on Thursday, May 13, 2021, at 1010 Mass Ave, this was the Subcommittee hearing, the first case, it was two cases, BOA 114-5330, 165 West Canton Street, was denied building code, case BOA 114-5795, 165 West Canton was approved, rezoning. The case BOA 116-1109, 46 N Street, it was the companion, case BOA 116-1110, 48 N Street, is being heard at 12:30 this afternoon. Case BOA 117-9768, 697 East 8th Street, this was existing triple-decked roof replacement that was approved with no building code. Articles, case BOA 117-2179, 70 Gates Street, was, was at a third-floor master street, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 117-3205, 68 Thomas Park, was denied, it was a proposed new curb cut of Thomas Park. Case BOA 116-3284, 1008 to 1010 Tremont, was a builder of a barber shop, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 114-5416, 96 Warren Street, was, was installed 30 by 30 concrete pad, installed concrete cut roof, roof install, a door was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 116-6344, 7 Victoria Street, was to remove and replace two existing dormers, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 102-9463, 55 Church Street, was deferred to June 22 at 12:30. For full board, case BOA 113-4172, 16 Malcolm Road, was to renovate existing three-season porch to a four-season porch, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 116-5301, 185 Russet Road, was a repaired garage and master bedroom and add dormers to the attic, was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 116-6262, 51 Dow Road, was a sunroof deck, was. Case BOA 116-6262, 51 Dow Road, was a sunroof deck, was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 116-7559, 287 Bellevue, Bellevue Street, was adding a third-floor addition, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 970-4521 Brigham Street, it was denied without prejudice, it was denied, I'm sorry, for parking for one vehicle. Case BOA 115-1329, 64 Radcliffe Road, it was deferred to July 13, 2001, full committee at 12:30. In case BOA 112-4052, 181 Maple Street, was a single-family adding a front porch, a rare addition to an existing building, it was approved with BPDA. We need a motion for approval.
Is there a motion to concur with the recommendations or something?
Yes.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, now I'm going to go to the 12:30 for the deferrals and withdrawals, and then I'll go back to K Street. Do we have any deferrals or withdrawals for 12:30 cases, please? Address, please.
137 Leyden Street.
For the record, calling BOA 102-4228, 137 Leyden Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, I'm actually appearing on behalf of George Moranci, who's not available at this time, asking for withdrawals of 137 Leyden.
I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Yes. 11th Pacific Street.
For the record, 11th Pacific Street?
Yes, this is attorney John Barry on behalf of the applicant, the doctor's provider.
Hold on two seconds, sir. Did you say 11th Pacific Street?
Yes.
But do you have another one, too, or just one?
I, I have two, but I was going to do them one at a time, but the second one is 21...
Let's do Pacific Street first. Calling BOA 993-501, 11th Pacific Street. Name and address for the record, please.
This is attorney John Barry from the Law Offices, John D. Barry at 400 Granite Ave, Milton, Mass. We're, members of the board requesting one last deferral on this project. We've been meeting with the community since the last deferral, the project's all set. There was not enough time for the examiner to review the revisions that were supplied, and they requested that we request a deferral from the board one last time.
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Second? Is there a second?
Yep.
Second. All opposed?
Aye.
Excuse me. Out close.
We have a date of 7/27 at 12:30.
Thank you.
Mr. Barry, what's the other one?
The second one is 2149, 2151 Dorchester Ave.
Okay, for the record, calling BOA 111-2785, 2149 to 2151 Dorchester Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, this is attorney John Barry from the Law Offices, John D. Barry, located at 400 Granite Ave in Milton, Massachusetts. This project, the full revision set was provided, unfortunately, an examiner didn't have a chance to do a full review, and again, we were, we were requested to request a deferral from this board.
I'll make a motion for deferral.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
The date will be 7/27 at 12:30.
Thank you so much, members of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 12:30 cases?
4648 H Street, Mr. Secretary.
Sure, thank you. Hold on two seconds. For the record, calling BOA 116-1109, 46 H Street, there is a companion case BOA 116-1110, 48 H Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, actually appearing on behalf of my colleague George Moranci, who did have a scheduling conflict today, he was not available. He's asked for a deferral of this matter, preferably for a late August date, Mr. Secretary, if that's possible.
Sure, we can make that happen.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
We have a date of August 31 at 12:30.
That's late. Thank you.
Please, if you want it, you got it. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
167 Lexington Street, Mr. Secretary.
Hold on two seconds, councilor. For the record, calling BOA 105-5809, 167 Lexington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matt Ekel from Drago and Tiscana with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking a short deferral on this matter. Unfortunately, we lost our architect. We do have a new architect, and plans were submitted, they were just not reviewed yet by the plans examiner.
Glad you found a new architect. All right, can I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Unfortunately, Mr. Ekel, the earliest we get you in is July 27 at 12:30.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary, members of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 12:30? There are none, I'll go back to the 11:30.
Yeah, we have one more case at 11:30, and then I'll take the record, Mr. Porchin.
I'm going to call it for the record right now, calling BOA 102-6920, 115 K Street. There is a companion case BOA 102-6937, 115 K Street. This is for 115K, this is renovations, improvements and minor demolition to creation of a commercial parking, containing a total of 37 parking spaces for proposed cannabis retail establishment. Violation Article 68, Section 13, the use is conditional. This is for 115K, K Street, this is a change of occupancy to a telecom service to cannabis establishment retail for recreational use, and then perform interior fit-out of existing building. The violation is Article 68, Section 13, subsection 68-39, cannabis establishment is conditional, and Article 68, Section 13, subsection 68-39, cannabis established accessory uses of office storage is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, this is Mike Ross from the Law Office of Prince O'Bell, business address of One International Place, here on the phone with Charlie Yon, the Director of Operations and of Holland Brands, and Herbie Duvenay, our Security Consultant of Windmacher. Ambassador, if you could just pause, maybe go back two slides, I'll just kind of walk through this with you. Right there is good. This is a, sure, this is a proposal for an existing industrial building, which is located in a local industrial sub-district of the South Boston neighborhood district, which is a conditional use. The building is self-contained, it's a fenced-in area with approximately 36 parking spaces on the site. Next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. The building is on the outer edge of the South Boston community, pretty much on the edge of the peninsula, if you will, with direct access to Summer Street, to the area, and back, back out through Summer Street. The proposed facility is not with any, within any buffer zone, no schools, no parks, or playgrounds, or places where children commonly congregate, which I know is a question that we get sometimes from the board. Next slide, please. The building is surrounded by industrial uses, including a giant ever-source transformer station that surrounds two sides of the building. You can see the transformers in, in the photo there. Next slide, please. I also just wanted to note that Article 68 does encourage this type of commercial use and a job creation type use. This, we anticipate about 20 jobs will be created by this facility. The additional context photos over the next three or four slides, what they show is an area that, unlike many of the multi-story buildings that are around us, we are not increasing the square footage of this building in any way, shape, or form, we are merely renovating the building and to allow for this new use. You can go to slide 12, and that's the footprint, and that's probably the best slide to, to hang out for one second, two more slides, if you will. The, right here is great, thank you, Madam Ambassador. So, I mean, if you look at the building, the building might look large at first sight, but a closer look, if you see that lower right-hand corner of the space, we are going to give away one quarter of this building with its own separate entrance, it will not be for cannabis use, it will not be a use that we determine, it'll be a use that'll be determined by this community for whatever they want to use that space for. The other half of this building, you'll note in the gray area, we're going to bring our deliveries directly into the building, so there's a delivery bay within the building, and probably most important, there's an internal line queuing area. So rather than having people queuing outside the building, any kind of queuing will be inside the building. The building is really designed to get people in and out as quickly as possible, even the restrooms are at the front of the building in the line-queuing area. What you're left with is a retail area, the yellow, which is less than 3,000 square feet, it's 2,700 square feet, and what you have in the parking area is approximately 36 spaces to allow for no traffic issues outside the area, and at nighttime, we're going to make those spaces available to area residents, for free, to, to use for overnight parking. Our proposed hours of operations will be 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and then 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sunday. There's some additional rendering drawings that you could, Madam Ambassador, just quickly scroll through, that show kind of the elevations, there's that Bay Area door that I mentioned, and the other elevations, there's an interior shot, that's the next slide, just to kind of give you a sense of what, or rather, actually, pause here for a second, you can see that the site is well buffered, intending to prevent any type of nuisance, any type of issues. You really don't see into the site today, it's been like that for a long time, you're not going to see into the site tomorrow. There's, next slide will just show you kind of what the inside will look like. And then just the final two slides, just to, to make the point, we've had a long time to go through the community, I know there's a lot of interested people in this community in particular, and they care very much about their neighborhood. We've spent over two years engaged in a community process and dialogue, we're proud of the 200 letters of support we've received for this project. We, we are aware of the fact that this community did vote well above the average of the city of Boston, 70%, to support this, to support cannabis in this area. And finally, we just want to note that we have had 35 individual meetings with the direct, with direct Butters, with area residents, neither neighborhood associations has taken a position on this particular project. We feel like we're in the best location in South Boston. I'll pause there, Mr. Chair, to see if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ross. So the buffering that you, that you showed is not a rendering, you're saying that's existing conditions?
That's correct, the buffer slide, unlike slide five around?
Yeah, yeah, so you're saying that that's how it is now and how it'll remain.
Yeah, yeah, the, we will clean it up, we're going to probably put a good, a good amount of money into the facility, but that's how it looks today. It's an industrial building.
Just wanted to be clear about that, because it's, on the first-floor plan, it kind of looks as if it's part of the landscaping design, but you're saying that's there now? Okay.
Yeah, we will improve it with additional landscaping.
So, a few other questions, I know you already said it, can you repeat the hours of operation?
Yeah, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sunday.
Okay, and you said the parking spaces, at night, were going to be available to community residents, what happens at 9:00 a.m. if the community resident hasn't moved their car?
We're going to work with people, we really don't want to get in a situation where we're going to be towing our neighbors. Obviously, you know, we don't want to, if they're there every, every morning at 9:00, we're going to have to have a conversation. The intent here is to be able to have both uses working in a, in a holistic way.
Okay, and the community space, that's a, certainly a noble gesture, but what does it mean practically for the community to decide its use? Is it, is there a particular organization, an agency, how is that going to get, who's going to manage that?
Yeah, we've, we've told the elected officials of this community, District City Councilor Flynn and At-Large City Councilor Flaherty, that it's not our decision, it is, it is really a community decision, and we would rely on their guidance in that regard, and we will do what they suggest.
And you'll sign a contract with whoever they suggest?
Absolutely. You know, the, the intent of the space is to turn it over in a, in a, you know, kind of a vanilla box, and then...
No, no, I, I understand the intent, what I'm asking is, what will the, what will the actual application of it be? How will it be managed? What are the logistics?
It will be for them to manage. If they need to get relief, they would come back to the board here. It will be their space, we will, we will paper it, it's something we've committed to the Boston Cannabis Board, it's something we're committing to this board, it's something we're committing to the elected officials of this community, it's 4,000 square feet of prime space that we're going to turn over, because we simply don't need it.
Okay, no, I, I, I understand the goal, I'm just, it feels a little loosey-goosey right now, but I would, I hope that it would get tightened up by, by the time that this, this facility is open.
Yeah, I mean, it absolutely would, we need a, a tenant to sublease the, the property too, and once we have that tenant, we will provide a $0 lease to that tenant, and I can represent that to you as, as a practitioner before this board.
Okay, that's fine. All right, and with respect to the other issues, the internal line queue, the 2,700 square feet of retail seems pretty straightforward. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. No issue, no comment on that.
Okay, any questions on the board? All right, does anyone want to testify on behalf of the project?
Mr. Chair, we have several raised hands here, but I...
Well, let's do elected officials for the mayor's office, I'm going to wait in.
Mr. Chairman, the Councilor Flynn is on the call, he would like to speak.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to members of the board. The site, it's a high-traffic area, it's located in a residential part of the neighborhood that abuts the industrial area, with vehicles, trucks, buses, traveling frequently on the street. The, the area is developing into more of a residential area, especially over the last five years. The location is not in proximity to an MBTA station or public transportation. Therefore, many customers would likely drive or walk to this location, the added traffic from having a dispensary at those locations would disrupt the neighborhood, making the area even more congested. It's a quality-of-life issue for residents. Recently, many neighbors have reached out to my office and to other elected officials, expressed their concern about traffic, speeding, pedestrian safety, and other quality-of-life issues. I recently met with the Butters and business owners on these issues, not only due to this proposal, but the overwhelming amount of development in the neighborhood, including the recently approved project across the street at 776 Summer Street, which currently plans to add thousands of vehicles trips per day. On account of these concerns and significant pedestrian safety issues that I have, I need to oppose this location. Even during this pandemic, cars are going up L Street and, and Summer Street, significant amounts of speed, 70 miles an hour, going down Forest Street, 50, 60 miles an hour. I work every day with the Boston Police on this issue, and Transportation Department. I can't take a chance with these speeding cars and the potential for another accident in this neighborhood. I'm against the project, and my residents in the neighborhood have spoken out to me, and they're also opposed to the project.
Okay.
Chairman, and thank you to members of the board.
Thank you, councilor. Is, is there anybody else who wants to testify, either in favor or in opposition?
Yes, please.
Is the mayor's office on, on the call? Okay, well, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor Nisa Savi George's office, and we want to stand with Councilor Flynn and the Butters and oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we do have numerous letters of opposition and numerous letters of support, and we also have the letter from the... letters of support, and we also have the letter from the cannabis board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Okay. Go ahead.
Paul Sullivan, City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of Councilor Flynn, as well as the extensive process that went into drafting Article 68, the council's approach has been consistent, and he cannot support the variance at this time. He would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, we have about 16 hands raised. Just let me know how you want to go about.
16? Okay. Let's take three in support and three in opposition, and they have to be from abutters. So if you are not an abutter, then please lower your hand. So let's, first, let's, so someone in support who's an abutter?
Okay. Second, I know. All right, Brian, you've been unmuted. Are you a direct abutter to this project?
I am, but I'm opposed.
You're opposed.
Okay. Let's get, we'll get to the opposed.
Okay. One second. All right. Elizabeth, are you a direct abutter to the project?
I am not. I live at 186 West Second Street.
Okay. Can you lower your hand, please? Okay. Kate, are you a direct abutter to this project?
I am.
Kate Gutierrez?
Hi, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you in support for the project?
I'm in opposition.
Okay. We're going to try to get abutters in support. If we can't, we'll just move on to the opposition. Anybody else?
Mike, can you hear me? My screen just froze. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, Jessica. We can hear you.
I cannot select anyone's name on the attend. Having some issues with the, with the abutters. I'm not sure if it's connected to the...
Okay. Until that gets sorted out, Tom, can you take over handling the participants?
Eight and Brian are in opposition to the abutters.
Yes. We're trying to, we're looking for abutters who are in support.
We have a lot of people with their hands up, but I honestly have no idea. I can just start picking people.
Okay. So one, okay, so I can do that too. I'm just looking at the list now. Kate Gutierrez said she was in opposition. Brian Gray said he was in opposition. Tom Sullivan, are you an abutter and in support? Yes or no?
I am a, I am one of the building owners, and I am in support. I may...
Wait, 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 hang on. You own the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's not what we're looking for. We assume you're in support. All right. Brendan Albert, are you an abutter and in support?
Yes, I am in opposition, and it's 50 feet from my house, so, yeah.
Then I'm writing down the names in opposition. We will get to you. I got Kate, Brian, and now Brendan. Okay. Lisa Ballard, a butter and in support or opposition?
Hello, Ms. Ballard, you've been on the unit.
I'm going to go right down this list because we got a long agenda. Colin Hughes, the 36th, a butter and in favor or opposition?
Ballard, you've been on the unit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm home.
Hello?
Okay. This is, we're going to keep going. Glenn Harrington, an abutter and/or opposition or in support?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, I'm the attorney for several of direct abutters. And to make things easier for you, I can submit to you the four names that are going to speak who are direct abutters and non-repetitive.
Okay. But are in support or opposition?
In opposition, but I can now reassure fire. You want me to give you the four names?
No, put them in the chat, okay? All right. Maria Malone, a butter or in support or opposition?
I'm an abutter in opposition.
Okay. We're narrowing this down. Thomas Callis, an abutter or in support or opposition?
Yes, hello. I'm four blocks away on Emerson Street, and I am in support.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Tyler Murphy, a butter and in support or opposition?
Two of the ones that I believe were presented at...
Murphy, if I'm muted.
What?
Okay, the ones that I have prepared by PFP.
Yes. And is PFP on the line?
I can't, I can't hear. I'm going on. David Schramm, a butter and support or opposition?
I'm an abutter, and I'm in opposition.
Okay. All right. As far as I can see, we've gone through the entire list. I've got Kate, Brian, Brendan, Glenn, Maria, and Tyler. And then we have the four names from Glenn Harrington. So I'm going to arbitrarily call on three of you, and I apologize if I don't include you, but I'll start with Kate. One, can Kate, can you please give your name and address to the record and why you're in opposition?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kate Gutierrez. And also for the record, I wish to confirm receipt of the package of materials submitted to the board on May 12. And just to highlight a few points briefly here.
Yeah, quickly.
Yes. Since 2010, I've owned my home at 547 East First. I live 50 feet directly across from the site. The proposed use is inappropriate for the site would have an overwhelming adverse impact on quality of life. The site is located in a local industrial sub-district. Former business Accurate Fasteners was a wholesale manufacturer of nuts and bolts since 1960. It saw just a handful of employees, cars, and deliveries per day, always within traditional office hours, Monday through Friday only. On weekends, the site was entirely quiet. This proposal suggests a radical change in use that will be both more objectionable and more detrimental to the life that we enjoy now by introducing a high-volume, ten-cash-register retail establishment, no doubt advertised from major highways, the airport, and track stations, food terminal, open seven days a week, 9:00 at night, 7:00 on Sundays, deliveries happening during late-night, early-morning hours, anticipating sleepless nights, noise and fumes coming out of our bedroom window.
Okay.
And leaving cars, honking horns. And may I say one more thing? The relative quiet outside our bedroom on nights and weekends today will be gone forever, and we have lived in a low-stress, general sense of safety, living where we do, across from a quiet, non-retail manufacturer. This is...
Okay. All right. No, no, that's it. No, we don't have time for a longer speech. Brendan Albert, briefly, if there's anything that wasn't mentioned, mention.
Yes, hello, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brendan Albert. I live directly across the street, 50 feet away. I've been here for 11 years. I wanted to take issue with Mr. Ross. He said earlier that there are no parks located near this business proposed site. That's simply false. 400 feet within the site, there is I Street, Eversource Park. It's a public park, and it's actually part of Boston Hubble Park. I take my dog there every single day. And what else I want to talk about next is just, East First Street is already a treacherous road and has long had issues with speeding, as Councilor Flynn mentioned earlier. And I'm concerned that adding the high-volume retail mega-market like this proposed will add hundreds of additional vehicles and will have enormous negative impacts on my quality of life.
Okay. Thank you very much. Maria Malone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Maria G. Malone. I live at 525 East First Street. I'm a direct abutter directly across the street. I would like to, in addition to the points that I made and the materials that we submitted, highlight the fact that we have 141 direct abutters that are in opposition of this proposal. Specifically, I'd like to point out a few things. You know, Councilor Ross or Attorney Ross has repeatedly represented a number of supporters. And if you kindly refer to the details of our materials we submitted, you will see that there are a number of false, you know, false...
I'm less, I'm less...
...representation.
Hang on, hang on. No, 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 no.
The parking that's being made available...
No, stop, stop. I'm not interested in going back and forth between who said, you tell me why you are in opposition, period, and then we need to close this out.
Do you want me to unmute her, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, unmute her.
I made an investment into my condo to be a sizable piece of my retirement. When I made this investment, this was to be my forever home. I was drawn to this neighborhood, which will be forever changed if you approve this proposal. If you approve this project, I will suffer the following: traffic and cars constantly coming and going from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., honking from cars, idling, ride shares pulling over and blocking traffic, and backups from their parking lot.
Okay, okay. We are repeating what others have said. I appreciate the fact that everybody feels very passionately about this, and I know that there are other people who want to speak, but basically the same measures are being repeated over and over again. I think we understand the concerns, and at this point, I'm going to go back to the board. And we got the testimony we were looking for, and I am going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, could I just respond to a couple of the items that we...
No, no, no.
I just got a quick question.
Go ahead.
This is, is Jeff on? Hampton from the VPDA? When South Boston was rezoned, this was considered in the rezoning, right?
No, this was done when the cannabis regulations came out. There was a separate amendment that affected everybody across the city. So it's conditional use everywhere, except in residential districts. So if this district is in East Boston or Dorchester, it's conditional everywhere. So it's not something that was originally in Article 68. We inserted it through a citywide amendment.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Joe?
Sort of, but in, this district was considered, was recently rezoned, and not rezoned because it's always been local industrial, like it's...
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on that point?
Mr. Ross, I think we've heard enough testimony, both for and against. I'm going to look for a motion from the board.
I mean, I'm going to make a motion to approve the conditional use of this.
Is there a second? In the absence of a second, that motion fails. Can I have another motion? We need some motion.
Chairman?
Yeah. Yes?
I'm happy to just try to provide a little bit, a little bit more context here.
No, 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 Mr. Ross, we're done with taking the testimony. Okay, looking for a board. Mr. Ujero made a motion. Is there a second for his motion? We got some rumbling going on again.
That's Tyrell.
Okay, thank you.
What'd you say, Tyrell?
Motion to deny.
So Mr. Kindel offered a motion to deny. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of a motion to deny?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let me, okay, how many opposed? Mr. Ujero?
Mr. Ujero is opposed.
Who else? Oh, I thought I heard another voice.
No, I think, Mr. Chair, I think you need, I think we need, I heard multiple voices on both. So I hope everybody's muted, except the board members.
Okay, let's try this again. All those in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
All those opposed? The only one is Mr. Ujero. The motion carries. Okay. It is now 1:14 p.m. We still have the 12:30 hearings. I'm going to suggest that we reconvene at 1:30. Take a 15-minute break. I had said 1:30. I apologize. Let me quickly do a roll call, make sure everybody's here. Mr. Fortune?
Yes, I'm here.
Glad to hear it. Mr. Ujero?
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Dong?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Kindel?
Here.
Ms. Loeb?
Here.
All right, great, we're all here, so I think we're ready to continue. Mr. Fortune, take it away.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Tom. Jessica, have you restarted the recording?
Oh, yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, all set. Thank you.
Okay, you know, one thing that I know that is considered sort of good practice to just restate the conditions of the hearing, so let me just do that and then we'll start. I will repeat some from the morning. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, and as with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. So we prefer to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project that is the individuals who live closest to the project. So if you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application via the WebEx Events platform. To raise your hand, click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon, and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again, and your hand should go down. If you're connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Call in a first case, BOA 1068596, 1088 Saratoga Street. This is erected addition and change occupancy from five to a four-unit residential dwelling with four vehicles. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction and extension of a nonconforming building. Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston IPod. Article 53, Section 57.2, front yard, the corner lot, conforming with existing building alignment. Article 53, Section 8, Use of Regulations, five units removed to four units in the 2F Sub-District. Article 53, Section 8, Basement Units Are Perpetent. Article 53, Section 9, Insufficient Side Yard Setback. Article 53, Section 9, Excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, Number of Allowed Stories Has Been Exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, Maximal Allowable Height Has Been Exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, Insufficient Rear Yard Setback. Article 53, Section 52, Roof Structure Restriction. Article 53, Section 56, Insufficient Parking. And Article 53, Section 56.5, Design and Size and Maneuverability. Name and address for the racket, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, John Bauer. Also with us is Eric Zacherson, who was the project architect. Mr. Chairman, this is a pre-existing two-family dwelling located in the Oregon Heights section of East Boston. It's located in the corner of Saratoga and St. Edward's Road. I'll try to clarify the record a bit. The secretary had read in the violations. This originally was being proposed as a five-unit dwelling. That's why we're back before the board after a deferral. The project has since evolved and changed, and what's before the board is the most current iteration of plans that have been reviewed by ISD. Specifically, we originally were proposing a basement unit. That has been eliminated. The only livable space that is now being proposed, the low-grade, is in connection with one of the units, and it's a family room only. It's not intended to be a bedroom. This would expand the existing two-family structure. You can see here in the photo. We'd be providing an addition to the left, if you go down Saratoga Street, and providing parking up to four vehicles. The rendering here shows what the finished product would look like. We are proposing roof decks, but those roof decks would be based upon conversations with the community. Will be located above the second story of the existing building. The addition that's being proposed to the left would have access to that roof deck that you could see in that prior rendering. Each of the units here that are being proposed are roughly small, so around 1,000 square feet. They go up to about 18 hertz square feet. They are all three-bedroom, two-bath. The violations for this particular project, starting with the use of 2F 4,000 limits the number of units on any one lot to two. This is surrounded by numerous multifamily, as well as threes and four-unit buildings, maybe some six-unit buildings as well. The lot area, this is already a nonconforming condition. 4,000 square feet is required. We have 3,640 square feet. Our floor-to-air ratio would expand the existing footprint from up to 1.67. We are cited for height as well. The 2F district permits up to two and a half stories. We are showing a three-story addition. I think taking the totality of the building and looking at the extent of the addition that we're proposing, we do not propose a full three stories across the property. The existing two-family, two-story structure would be maintained, only adding roof decks that are accessed either by hatch or by slider. With respect to the rear and side yards, those typically are violations that we see on the corner lots, depending upon how the building is looked at and where the
They're not.
They have not been, they have not been, the, the plans I have...
You're describing, they've all been recorded?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, but so there's easement between thirty-three and thirty-one and between thirty-one and twenty-nine, two separate documents?
Uh, yes, we all have. So thirty-three was owned by us as a separate entity. Uh, so all of the current condo owners have signed that. It's all on record. Uh, thirty-three, we are the owners of with a separate entity. And we worked in conjunction with the owner of twenty-nine Waybon Street, considering, uh, Wabino and Waybon Street are very two-way traffic, very crowded streets. So to ensure, um, you know, access, we wanted to work with twenty-nine Waybon Street to take his current tenants' parking off of the street, grant that easement so that he, that his tenants could alleviate some of the parking issues in the neighborhood.
Okay, uh, that's interesting. I, I, I thought, when I saw Wabino Street, I thought that was a misprint. I didn't realize it's a Wabino. Okay, all right. Um, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings? Uh, the, the plans are good. Okay, um, any questions to the board? Uh, is there anybody here to testify in support of the project?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this Jason Gant from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this project. They have held an extensive community process and also accommodated lots of community requests, while also maintaining the relationship with neighbors and taking care of any concerns that they have posed. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chair Secretary here, we do, we have no new letters of support or opposition.
Okay, are there any raised hands?
Yes, there are, yep. Um, Marilyn, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, this is Marilyn Chase.
We can't hear you, Marilyn. I've gotten disconnected. Not sure what happened. I'll call my.
Just confirming, I'm sorry, I'm just confirming that you can hear me.
Okay, I can hear you now.
Okay, Marilyn Chase, I'm an owner at seventeen Waybon Street. I have a question first. So I had received email and I understood that they were looking to put, still looking to put six units on the property, or they're now looking to put two?
Uh, yes, yes, two. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, two has been in place for roughly, I believe, almost eight months now, maybe longer than that. So we changed the plans, uh, from six to four to three to two.
Okay, so I am, uh, I, I came on prepared to be not in support because, um, the, uh, we, we have consistently found that the, um, property lot is insufficient for the number of units. But if they're now talking about two units, I still have some concerns that it's insufficient. But it certainly is more appealing than the original six units.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any, uh, anybody else?
Yep, Mike Cozul, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Michael Cozul with Project Right, three-two-zero, the letter A, Blue Avenue. We've been working with other, uh, Waybon and other budding residents in the area. We have concerns about easements to use other properties. Uh, we've had problems with that in other neighborhoods. Uh, we're, we're concerned that they're taking open space for thirty-three Waybon and turning that as, as an easement, which makes it, um, very congested. So what happens then is that people then start to grow out in the sidewalks and create other fire safety issues. As, as a result, we're still opposed. We think the building's too tight for such a small property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, can I have a motion, please? Uh, I'll make a motion to support, um, with the PDA design review.
Hold a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-zero-five-three-three-three-seven, sixty-four Clockwood Street. This is construction of four new townhouses. The violation is Article sixty, section nine. The usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty, section eleven, the use is forbidden. And Article sixty, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is, uh, Roderick Eagle to be asked?
All right, this is Stuart Schreier. I represent, uh, Joy Builder, Roderick Ego Don Berry. Apologize, I was muted. Um, my client originally proposed to build a four-unit. He went to Greater Mattapan, and Greater Mattapan suggested that he reduce it to three. He reduced it to three, and we got a, uh, a new violation notice, which in our case, the violation notice that I have in my hand only listed insufficient lot area. If there are other violations, uh, I wasn't aware of them before, before this. But, um, the issue here is Greater Mattapan is supportive. One neighbor is opposed.
All right, we'll, we'll hear about the support from the community from the mayor's office. We want to talk about the zoning.
Sorry. Uh, what's, what's going on here is my client wants to build a three-family house, approximately a little over twelve-hundred square feet in each unit. These are three-bedroom units. They have three and a half baths in these units. So each, each bedroom has its own bathroom. Um, they're, they're three-quarter baths. They're not quite full baths. They have showers. Um, and, uh, these are nice family-oriented rental units, and my client wants to do the three-family. One of, one of the concerns that he hasn't addressed yet is one of the neighbors thinks that somehow with the pitch roof on the attic, that he's going to suddenly make it into a four-family. So if on the design review, the neighbors wanted us or the, uh, PPA wants us to take off the pitch roof and put a flat.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. We're not going to be concerned with the fears about, we're going to deal with what's on the, on the, on the plans.
Thank you.
So you've got three units, one on the first floor, one second, one third. What's the size, what's the size of the unit?
A little over twelve-hundred square feet.
Okay, and the basement is, uh, used for what?
Unfinished.
Unfinished for storage, uh?
Correct.
Okay.
Would just be unfinished.
Okay, yeah, and it does appear, I mean, least of the violations that are cited here are open space insufficient and lot area insufficient. That's, and the use is forbidden. So that's, what, what is, what is the zone, the, the area zone for?
It's a three F-six-thousand zone.
Uh-huh. Mr. Chair, I'm, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Is this, um, am I reading this correctly? It's supposed to be four?
Yeah, no, this says four new townhouses.
Four new townhouses.
No, it was reduced to three, and I, my refusal letter is construction of a three-family dwelling.
We do not have that in my file. I don't have that on my file.
Okay, but we're gonna, I mean, we're, the drawings reflect, uh, what Mr. Schreier is, is proposing. So we're gonna go ahead. Okay, and speaking of which, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
The, the drawings are, uh, are fine.
Okay.
And there are three.
It shows a three-family, so that's where we are, so, yeah.
Yes, yes, it does.
That's what Mr. Counselor said, so, yeah.
Yeah, and if you look on the first, on A-one, it's got the zoning dimensional regulations, and it's in compliance on everything except minimum lot area, so.
That's correct. Yep, I agree with that, too, so, yeah.
Okay, uh, all right. Um, any questions to the board? Uh, is there anyone here to testify in support?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Don Sam peoples with the office, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in opposition of this proposal, um, for the reason of resident concern, um, including congestion on the street, parking issues, and that residents were not notified of the, of the changes to the proposal. Thank you.
They weren't notified of the changes from four to three?
Correct.
Is that true, is that true, Mr. Schreier?
No, uh, in fact, in fact, Greater Mattapan knew about the four to three. We contacted the mayor's office and asked them for their help to get in touch. They've spoken to the neighbor. He's denying that he has been informed that it's been reduced from a four to a three. He's seen the plans. In fact, it was, uh.
Okay, okay, okay.
He showed them.
Okay, show them the plans, very good. All right, um, is there anybody else to testify, either in support or opposition?
Mr. Chair, I do have two raised hands if no one else.
Mr. Judge, Tom, um, are the plans that we've been looking at at the hearing, are they been stamped by ISD?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
They're not.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. They have not been, they have not been, the, the plans I have have not been stamped by ISD.
Yeah, so those, if, if the, if the plans examiner has not reviewed the new plans, then they're properly in front of the board.
Oh, okay, well, that's, uh, that, that would have been nice to know a few minutes ago. Um, I'm gonna, I mean, I'm taking the position I always take, which is we can't, we can't approve something that has not been gotten, that not gotten to us by going through the process, so I'm gonna ask for a deferral.
Well, may I say one thing?
I'll make the motion for deferral.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Date? You have a date of, uh, July twenty-seventh at twelve-thirty.
Thank you.
All right, next, so on the next two cases, calling BOA one-one-five-five-seven-one-two, ten Ruthman Park. There is companion case, BOA one-one-five-five-seven-one-one, seventy-one Ruthman Street. This is for Ruthman Park, assigned two off-street parking spaces, parking one and parking six, from the parking spaces, six, six parking spaces located at the rear of seventy-one Ruthman Street to the property of ten Ruthman Park and auxiliary parking spaces, and created new accessible parking on the main drive of ten Ruthman. The violation is Article fifty, section forty-three, off-street, off, ancillary off-street parking use is conditional use. All car space shall be entirely located on the lot of the space it intended to serve. This is for seventy-one Ruthman. This is a first-floor reconfiguration, extension to attic floor with dormers. A total number of units remains the same, six off-street parking spaces in the rear property, three for seventy-one Ruthman and three for ten Ruthman. This is the violations, Article nine, section one, extension non-conforming use conditional. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the height requirement is excessive in stories. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the height is excessive in feet. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, usable open space is insufficient due to the six parking spaces. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, side yard with access driveway cannot be less than ten feet wide. Article fifty, section forty-four, the side yard and access driveway cannot be less than ten feet wide. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small.
Okay.
This is addressed to fifty-one Adopson Road.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're gonna do this a little bit differently. This is the third time we have, we have had this discussion. Um, Mr. Ujero and I did a site visit last week. So I have a series of questions, and if Mr. Ujero has questions as well, um, as opposed to walking through the process, uh, one more time. So the buildings, uh, the ten Ruthman and seventeen Ruthman have common ownership, correct?
Ten Ruthman Park and seventy-one Ruthman. You're talking about ten Ruthman Park?
Yes.
Seventy-one, yes.
Okay, and they're, 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 they're just recently completed. They're still under construction in some ways, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, and there is right now a chain link fence with a gate that runs across from seventy-three to seventy-one, blocking access from, uh, Ruthman Park to the rear where the parking area is.
That, that is correct. That is to, for protecting the property, yep.
Okay, now, when I was there, I mean, so one, the issue all along has been that apparently there is litigation currently underway, and is that with, with the owner of seventy-three?
That is correct. I, I have co, I have co-counsel Sammy Nabulsi online, represents the owners with regard to the easement, um, issue in court, and he can speak to that. Sammy, if you're wrong.
Yes, he is. He's on by call. He was having some connectivity issues, but I think he was on caller forty-six, the second. Uh, okay.
Okay, well, here's what I want to understand. I want to understand what the nature of the litigation is, because the easement, the, the driveway is currently not wide enough, uh, unless there is a negotiated easement. There actually is, if you look at the, the, the line under the words Ruthman Park, where you've got the, um, uh, the, the data there, that line going left to right halfway is assumed the lot line. And if you go from the edge of the building on seventy-one to that lot line, it appears to be ten feet, but you've got a sidewalk there that got built. It's two or three feet. So there's no way that, that there can be, uh, uh, direct, uh, direct access without an easement being created and agreed to. Um, and I, you know, it seems a little odd, to be honest with you, that it's gotten this far in the process and that the building is like ninety-five percent complete. Well, I don't know, I don't know what the interior is like, because I couldn't see. But without this issue being resolved, so I think for us to make any kind of decision about what needs to happen, we need to understand the nature of the litigation.
Sure.
Sammy?
Yeah, can folks hear me?
Yes, yep.
Great, this is, uh, thank, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Uh, this is Sammy Nabulsi. Uh, I'm litigation counsel to the owner of seventy-one Ruthman Street and ten Ruthman Park, and I'm representing the owner in the, uh, in the land court litigation, uh, arising from the use of, the use of the, the easement. Uh, just, just to put in perspective real quick what we're, what we're looking at. So, uh, you, you are correct that, i- if you, if you're looking at the plan that's on our screen here, there's, there is this driveway, you know, for lack of a better term, I guess, that is titled Ruthman Park. That, that, that dark solid line that kind of runs through the middle of it towards the, you know, the, the, you know, southwesterly half, it starts to kind of diverge a little bit from the middle. Um, those are the actual lot lines. But if you see up against each of the properties, so if you see up against the building at seventy-three, the building at seventy-one, and then, you know, a few feet from the building at ten, uh, there is this dashed line. The, the dashed line on both sides is actually one shared right-of-way for all of the properties, seventy-one Ruthman Street, ten Ruthman Park, seventy-three Ruthman Street, and seventy-five Ruthman Street. So, so the driveway for seventy-one, it's not accurate that it only goes from the dashed line to the solid line. All of these properties have a common interest in the right-of-way, which is that entire distance from the dashed line along seventy-one and that dashed line along seventy-three Ruthman Street, extending, extending southwesterly, I believe, to ten.
But, but, excuse, excuse me, the, the dashed line in seventy-three is actually inside the building.
The, the.
Okay, no, the dashed line runs right alongside the edge of seventy-three, right?
Exactly, exactly. It doesn't go, it doesn't go in the building. I, you know, I don't know to what extent.
Okay, no, 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 that's, that's, that's fine. So, so my point is that when we were there and we measured it out, from the dashed line to the dashed line is, is, uh, you know, it's plenty wide for a driveway. It's, uh, it looks like it's twenty-some, twenty feet, or a little less than twenty feet, maybe fifteen to twenty. But the solid line in between the, parallel to those dashed lines is less than ten from either one of those dashed lines, meaning that, that without an easement between them, you don't have enough width for a driveway.
So, so that, that is, so, so the reason that's not true, and I guess that's also in part the subject of the litigation, is there is an easement that exists. It is a papered right-of-way. And what it is, is it is a, it is a right-of-way that is the, the, the middle, that, that solid line in the middle is not part of it. The, the right-of-way is the entire width from dashed line to.
Yeah, okay, no, I understand. So tell us what the, what, please tell us in as fair a way as possible. I know you're a litigator, but what is the nature of the litigation?
Uh, that's absolutely fair, and I will, I will frame it as objective as possible.
Thank you.
The, the right-of-way, the right-of-way that is recorded is a shared right-of-way for all of the owners of the properties you see in this plan, seventy-three, seventy-five, seventy-one, and ten. The right-of-way provides that all of the owners have a, have a right of, you know, use, passage, uh, and, you know, open, kind of open to the sky, I suppose, uh, in the interest in the whole right-of-way. The, the, the nature of the dispute is, initially as proposed, we had three parking spots along the retaining wall at the end of the right-of-way. So back on that southwesterly end.
Yeah, okay, okay, yep.
Yeah, initially, we had three parking spots, the vehicle facing, essentially facing the retaining wall or could be backed into it, um, along, along the right-of-way. Based on those parking plans, the owners of seventy-three and seventy-five filed a lawsuit in the land court. My, the allegations, as I understand them, is that the placement of per, permanent parking spots on the easement obstructed kind of the use and passaged over the right-of-way. In, in the complaint itself, I do believe it's fair.
Okay, okay, I, okay, okay, I don't want to litigate, I don't want to litigate the complaint here. It's in land court, and, and that's the appropriate venue. So, so the, so from my perspective, and, uh, my hope the board's perspective, it doesn't make any sense for us to grant a variance when there is ongoing litigation that may undermine the very nature of the variance. And I, before I ask anybody for a motion, I'm gonna ask Mr. Ujero if he has any comments, because he was there with me.
So, yeah, I, I think, I, I think that, excuse me.
Let, let Mr. Ujero talk.
Yeah, I, I think that as long as the parking spots aren't over the dotted line, then, and not infringing on the eas, then the, the easements for cars or, or, or people or whatever to access. So I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily, um, see why we couldn't approve parking spots. I, I don't think that's single handicap space. I think that's, that's a no-go, because that's in the easement. But the easement's, the easement's recorded, it's there. And, and from a land use perspective, I don't see why they, I mean, we got a grant relief order, but I don't see why parking on their own property is, is an issue. As long as they have a legal easement to it and they have the legal easement.
I agree, Mr. Ujero, and that's why we moved all of the parking to the rear of seventy-one, uh, Ruthman, so that there's no obstruction in, in.
Okay, okay, so we have, okay, Mr. Small, we get that. So now all of the parking spaces are to the, the seventy-one side of the dashed line, which is where the easement is. So, uh, why has, why has that not ended the litigation?
That, so, so this is attorney Nabulsi again. Um, the, the decision, the decision to file the amended, you know, the amended parking plan, uh, you know, followed the last meeting. I think the hope, you know, the hope was to also, uh, you know, perhaps, uh, you know, I, I think we thought maybe there would be some feedback forthcoming following the site visit. So this has been a recent change. You know, to be honest with you, counsel for the plaintiffs and I have not conferred about whether this does resolve the litigation. Uh, my, my sense is that it would, because the crux of the complaint is the fact that a party has an easement. We've not conferred about.
Okay, okay, I think we, I think we know what we need to know. So, Mr. Ujero, I think that you are spot-on. I think if we entertain a motion that approves a plan with the elimination of the handicap space, I think that, that, that gives, that we have the authority to do that. So you want to be?
Well, man, we need to have testimony first, though. We haven't.
Yeah, well, we've, uh, we've been through this one sucker a whole bunch of times, but, uh, okay. Uh, is there anyone who wants to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this is Jason Gant from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. They've gone through an extensive community process and met with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association specifically around parking numerous times, and that's one of the main concerns that the rente-butters and neighbors have had. And they've also addressed any other concerns that came about as well. But like I said, parking was the main concern.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I do have a caller, um, he's a caller forty-four. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Betty Tony, and I'm the chairperson of the Roxbury Neighborhood Council. And I would like to go on record first saying that what was just said in terms of extensive neighborhood meeting, um, is disingenuous, because the neighborhood was then and still is against this project, because it has not been, um, worked out to, um, to a reasonable point. And then, and in addition to that, and I'm very upset, because I've been waiting for this, I've had so much trouble unmuting. And in addition to this, and getting on, on the video, in addition to this, the, um, if this board rules right now again, because they ruled the first time, this is premature, especially while it's in litigation. Even the, the, all this building going on, it's, it's just not good business. So I'm, I'm just letting you know that we vehemently oppose the legality of this appeal and the variances and the dangers, dangerousness factor of this, um, appeal.
Betty, can you state your address as well? You, you didn't state your address.
My address is twenty Alpine Street in Roxbury.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm from the Roxbury.
Okay, well, just, just a reminder that we are not ruling on the, uh, the merits or validity of the, of seventy-one Ruthman and ten Ruthman Park, those projects. All we are doing is limiting our, uh, uh, decision to the parking places. That's it. That's the limitation. And it appears that they are not part of the, uh, of the right-of-way. And in that sense, the, the litigation does not apply to the concerns that are before us today.
That's incorrect. That's incorrect, if I may. Um, hi, my name is Michael Duffy, time and davis and Duffy, one hundred Cambridge Street, Boston, Massachusetts. I represent the direct abutters at seventy-three and seventy-five Ruthman Street. And I should tell you that, uh, you've only been, uh, discussing one half of the litigation that's currently pending in the land court. There is also a case in which the variances that were granted for ten Ruthman Park, which include parking variances, are under appeal, and they're being challenged in the land court currently. Uh, and, and the proposal before the board right now is to amend those to accommodate an additional change, and it would be improvinent for the board to do that before the court resolves whether the original variances that were granted for the project in the first place are going to be upheld.
Well, okay, but we're not dealing, again, we're not dealing with whether the original variances were appropriate or not. We're dealing with a very narrow issue here, which is, which is the parking spots. And given, uh, given that they have been moved, uh, into the, um, the area, outside of the area of the right-of-way, assuming the handicap space is eliminated, then, and then the concern that we have about the litigation has gone away. I'm not, I, I have no, I have no opinion whatsoever on the merits of the litigation, one side or the other. That will play itself out. I'm just saying that what is in front of us is a very narrow and restricted issue.
Yes, Mr. Erlich, if I may, you are absolutely correct. Ten Ruthman Park was approved in May of two thousand nineteen. Seventy-one Ruthman Street was approved on October sixth, twenty twenty. The only issue, um, before you today is the, um, is the parking plan.
Okay, okay, and we, we are not revisiting the original approvals.
Right, exactly.
Nor are we taking the opinion one way or another on the ongoing litigation.
Exactly.
Parties involved to sort out. What we are, what we are talking about today is just the, uh, just the, uh, the six parking spots that we were talking about. So unless there is any other testimony, I.
I do have additional testimony, I'm sorry. They've been waiting for a while. I apologize. Um, Connie Forbes, go ahead. Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Parking, this is currently owned by.
Connie, I'm sorry, you were, you were muted. I apologize. Can you start over by saying your name and?
Is that better?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Connie. I apologize. Yep, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Connie Forbes, forty-seven Wambach Street. Um, and this is not only about the parking issue. This change in, in the plan took away all the green space. It also allows parking for ten Ruthman Park on seventy-one Ruthman Park's property, which is fine, the current owner remains the current owner, but if these are condominiums, they will no longer be the owners of this property, and that will generate, pardon me, um, the need to deed these parcels over, because they're not deeded as of right now. In addition, you're speaking about access. That space, we're concerned about access by emergency vehicles, especially, I'm glad they did move the, uh, the handicap parking off the easement that we asked, we did that before. It seems to still be on the plan. Um, but access by emergency vehicles is, is, is very important, and, uh, turning around the ability to maneuver in there, this has never been reexamined after the plans were, um, putting, you know, these plans, because where's the green space? We, we asked basic questions. They did not come back to Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association to discuss. to discuss these issues that were generated after they changed the plans. And I don't believe the ISD reexamined, because again, they are in violation of other issues, and it's a condominium, then you're saying that the owners are the same is only true until they become condominiums. So I think the argument that it's owned by the same person is irrelevant, because they were considered to be separate parcels.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Karen Foley, Boston City Counsel in East Wasabi George, and we want to stand with the abutters and the civic organizations and oppose this project. Thank you.
It's not a project, it's just parking.
And Mike Cozel, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Michael Cozel, Project Ride 328 Blue Avenue. We have issues with the parking design, we had issues with them going ahead with the construction of the parking without waiting for this appeal process go through. They've eliminated the green space behind one property, but we find that when they do that, then they take part of safety issues, they start grilling out in the middle of the street and sidewalk.
Okay.
We have issues about the emergency...
We heard, we heard this before, we're looking for abutters at the moment. Okay, anybody else?
No additional raised hands.
Okay, then I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve what the proviso that the handicap space is shown be eliminated.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, have a good day.
Calling the last case of the day, calling BOA 115-9723, 180 to 190 Hyde Park Avenue. This is building at 180, 190 was, is a commercial, commercial space currently is three, we will convert to a four, change of view space, remain retail, change retail, food service, cafe, illegal services and community outreach. The violation, Article 55, section eight, user regulations. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Melinda Priest, and my, my address is 89 Wambach Street. The person who's representing us today is Brian Oikle, he's been on this all time, he just got kicked out. Are you, are you best on yet, Brian?
What's his name?
BJ Oikle or Brian Oikle, he's been on this all the time.
Yeah, I did, I remember seeing him on.
He's in, he's in the room and he just got, get kicked out, so I will represent until...
Okay, he's on, he's on now.
And I am the pastor here, I am another panelist, but I'm gonna go ahead and have BJ represent. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the panel. Yeah, we were just denied our, our project for use regulations. It's a project at 180 to 190 Hyde Park Avenue.
Okay, so why don't you describe what you, what your intentions are?
Yeah, there's another drawing, the current drawing of the building, it's that one there, yeah. So currently, the first unit on the left side, where you see it's got the half-wall, that is a market. The second unit, 184, is currently unoccupied, but we're in the process of putting a church in there. And the third unit, 190, is currently a salon, but because of COVID, they're not operating out of that salon right now, just, they had to abide by some of the regulations and have chosen to work elsewhere for now. So what we're proposing, at the unit at 180, is gonna be subdivided into two separate Where those stairs are and that wall is, is gonna be built up. Actually, the current tenants have already built that wall, so 182 is currently vacant, 184 is semi-vacant, like we've, we're in the process of finishing renovations for the church. But also in that, the back of that unit, the room with the double doors, that's gonna be housing an immigrant connection site, which is gonna offer affordable legal services for immigration. So if you skip to the next plan, the next page, this is what we're proposing here. And we do realize that it's a very small space, but we're trying to make the most use of it as possible for unit 182 and 184. As you can see in 184, the office in that back corner, that's where the legal services will be happening. Then Sunday services will happen out in the main room, where you see the rows of chairs. We do realize it's very low capacity, and because of COVID right now, the capacity is pretty low as it is. And then finally, in 182, the smaller narrow unit, that's where the coffee bar will be. And actually, Amanda Oikle, she's the owner of the Public Coffee Company, and that's what will be going in there. We do have in the drawing a wheelchair-accessible washroom. And there is currently four tables with three seats at each table. That could change, like we do realize it's a very tight spot. We're hoping to just offer a good place for people to sit, sip their coffee, work on their computer.
Okay.
Just trying to make the best use out of this.
Let me ask you a few questions. Who owns the entire building?
Maria Tapalas, and I don't think she's on the call, she's an elderly lady.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. So, so the uses are all tenants, correct?
Yeah, and the use right now, the legal use, is retail?
No, no, I understand, I'm just saying, the proposed uses are all tenants, the owner...
Yes.
Okay, so you've got, you've got a market on it at, 180 will remain retail.
Right.
182 is changing retail to food service cafe. 184 is changing the retail to church, and, well, it says 188, but it's 190, that's remaining retail salon. So, so 180 and 190 are unchanged.
Right, right. And that's, in fact, the current tenants are staying in there, they're just, 180 is just downsizing their space.
Okay.
But also 184, you mentioned it's only a church, we're actually hoping to change it, like we were forbidden for legal services, which is gonna be an outreach of the church that's gonna happen in 184.
Okay, so right, this is a question of use, it's not, yeah, okay. And is the, are the tenants for 182 and 184 the same?
They're not, no, they're separate entities. Partners, but separate entities.
Okay, so it's four separate entities, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So this is a question strictly, there's no other zoning violation, there's just a question of use?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
And we have gone through a couple of neighborhood meetings.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get to that, we'll get to that.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
The drawings are fine. I guess, I'm just reviewing the proposed uses. So do you need relief for the legal services? Because that does not appear to be listed.
It is listed, and we do need relief for it.
Okay, it's not listed on the drawings, so I'm looking right, if you can look in the upper right-hand corner, it says tenant 184, religious church, but no legal. So I just want to make sure we're getting that, if we need to get that.
Sure, it is, if you look on the drawing in the middle of unit 184, it is written in that header, subheader.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the board understands that, so we should make sure that's clear. And then, I guess my other question is, you know, I have a bit of a disdain for grates and exterior aesthetics of, is there any proposal to update the outside? And potentially, I would love to see the grates removed, and, you know, I think there's a beautiful mural on the other side, and it's a great building, I think it's awesome, I'd love to see it upgraded a bit.
Yeah, we're actually waiting on the city for that, too. There's a, like a streetscape revamping process that's going on, and it's all, all those grates are gonna be removed, and it's gonna be pretty modern-looking.
Thank you. Okay, but we don't have, we don't have any visual, we don't have an elevation showing the exterior, do we? No.
No, we haven't.
Okay. But we certainly could put BPD Design Review.
Yeah, given this is about use, I guess that's okay, that's exactly. All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And the abutters' meeting for this proposal was held on February 11, 2021, and many abutters were supportive and excited to have this in JP. The applicant also received the support of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, so the mayor's office would like to go on record in support, and we're also excited to have him in our community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members, members of the board. This is Peter Favrito from City Councilman O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Karen Foley, Council Wasabi George's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, all solemn, this is the council, Michael Flaherty, the council is doing record in support.
Anybody else? Any raise hands?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Do we want, even though this is strictly about use, do we want to have the BPD Designer Review to look at the exterior?
I mean, if it's going, if it's going through the mains, is it going through the Main Streets program? I assume they'll be involved anyways, but...
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah.
So I think it's, it's probably not required if they're getting funding through the Main Streets.
Okay, okay. So there's a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion, did I hear an aye? Did I hear someone say they were opposed? Okay, did I miss something?
I think it's a delay.
Okay, I think you're right.
Delay.
I think you're right. Well, that's, I'm feeling delayed, too. Very good, thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Chairman.